Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is now six oh eight P M. And I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, February the first two thousand and twenty-two. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meeting much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference only pursuant to the County of Sacramento's January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two health order prohibiting in-person city council meetings. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice by the county. Today's agenda states that we are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to use the raise their hand feature option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment, or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. In addition, members of the public may use the call-in feature also described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request, as we do at typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. In view of the direct video conference and call-in direct opportunities for public comment just described, email comments will not be read out loud during the meeting, but will be distributed to city council and made part of the official minutes and posted to the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. I will now call the meeting to order. Tina, can you give us a roll call, please?
Sorry, can I ask, since I was having technical difficulties, did we have a report out from closed session?
Frank, do you want to repeat that for Tina? You're muted, sir.
Sorry about that. We did have a report out at about five fifty-five P M, Tina, and there was no portable action.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Sure.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. I would ask everyone to join me in a silent prayer followed by a flag salute. I wanted to mention today that Algro P D laid to rest Officer Lennahan, so I wanted to ask everyone if they could keep his family in your prayers this evening. Thank you. If everyone would please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would like to read our replay statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and A T and T U verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro fourteen live dot Zach County dot gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, February fourth at nine A M. and Saturday, February fifth at nine A M. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube dot com forward slash Metro Cable fourteen.
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do I have any additions or deletions from council this evening? Okay. Move on to item G, Public Comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by four P M. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
Okay, do we have any public comment at this moment?
There was no written comment and no hands raised at this time.
Okay, for those of you that are watching, if you would like to make a public comment, the public comment period is open, and you can raise your hand online if you are watching via Zoom, or you may call in using the phone number that's on the agenda link and press star nine to use the raise your hand feature that way. I'll allow a little bit more time here. Someone wishes to make a public comment. Also, if you're reviewing and you would like to make a public comment on a specific item throughout the meeting, you can wait until that item is being discussed and you can speak specifically on that item at that given time in the same manner.
We do now have a hand raised.
Okay, go ahead.
Harry Wenzel, Galt. I just think we should have an ETA for the financial statement, for last year's financial statement. And I'd like to see more utilization of the website for the G M P C P project. You know, like put the schedule when the meetings are, maybe notes to those meetings and just go ahead and post up the latest versions or the versions of the proposal, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Mr. Heinz, would you like to maybe answer that or no?
Which is just, I would ask Mr. Wenzel to listen out or to look out for future agendas, because his questions will be answered soon.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, do you have any, any other public comment at this moment?
Mr. Wenzel, is your hand still raised or did you have another comment? Okay, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. I'll now be closing the public comment period for a general public comment. And we're moving on to item H, Presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
Not this evening.
All right, thank you. Next item is item I, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions and/or Committees. I will go around to the council members, and then we will move on to item one, a report from Vice Mayor and myself. So, starting with starting with Councilman Papino, do you have anything to report this evening?
We had our first meeting of the Metro Air Quality Board Thursday, and surprise, the State Air Resources Board has now upped the percentage from forty percent of businesses that were required special inspections to one hundred percent of businesses that, you know, qualify as potential polluters. So, there's a lot of discussion of how much cost that's going to inflict on the businesses and how to, how to deal with it. Other than that, we didn't really have anything of substance.
Okay, sir. Councilman Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a meeting on the groundwater basin. We're still hammering out some basic financial matters, but there is good public interest and a lively conversation, so it's a good start.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, we had a Secog Board Meeting on the twentieth and didn't have a lot on the agenda. Did hear a presentation on land use and, and environment and those kinds of things. Also, a Delta Protection Commission briefing, which was somewhat interesting. But it's a this, this commission actually looks at the Delta and protecting the Delta. Don Nataoli is, is part of it and is, and they're doing what they can at the legislator legislature to make sure that the farmland and, and Delta is protected. So, it's kind of interesting. They, we did install our new board chair, Rick Jennings, who is a city council member in Sacramento, and the vice chair this year is Patrick Kennedy, who is a county board supervisor here in Sacramento. So, that's pretty much all we have.
All right, thank you, sir. We're going to move on to reports from Vice Mayor Sandu, who attended League of Cities Online Academy with myself, so let the Vice Mayor tell us about his attendance there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I joined the League of California City, Watch Your New Mayor's and City Council Academy. The academy expand an individual knowledge on a wide range of topics relevant to the city council member role with the range of topics relevant to the city council member their cities and foster relationship and communication with the peers. There is a few topics, I just going very brief, we learn on that that academy. I also joined a couple of years ago as a person to person, but this wasn't a watch show, you know, it helped, but it's not the same thing when we were doing person to person. One thing like in Brown Act, they go detail a lot of things, I learned about the Brown Act. Mayor and council members' responsibility and city manager commitments. Efficient communication, I can trust is the most important thing for the communication. Effective advocacy on the city issues. Then lastly, is social media and digital communication. A lot of learn about that. This was a good class, lot to learn, and that's all on this what, what your academy, and I also attend the yesterday on South Sacramento Conservation Agency meeting. And we did the review and approved the first report for the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation. There was a six project was involved, two project was the public and four was the private. And two out of four days are there from here from Galt, Oranda, and Cedar Flats. And that's all. Thank you, man.
All right, thank you, sir. I too attended the League of California Cities, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, it's was not as, as Chris, I mean, it was interesting, but I had much more a good time attending in person my first year. This would be the third year. So, two online academies, they attended in one in, in person, and everything about in person is, you know, you, you actually are able to socialize with other council members outside the sessions, and you learn a lot from talking to people about their cities and getting ideas about how they're handling certain things, and it's, it's really, no, it's really helpful. So, I really missed that part of it and but in light of COVID and everything where they do the online academy, so I was able to attend four sessions. One was a planning and land use policies, which was very interesting, just a brief kind of coverage of what that was about. We kind of went over some of the Assembly incentive bills regarding housing in California and what these policies are meant to do and the impacts they're having on housing and, and cities like Galt with, with mandates and so on. It was very, very interesting. And not to get into the weeds and all that, but I had a discussion with Community Development Director Craig Kaufman afterwards and, and, and he's sharp as a tack on this stuff, and so it was just, and it's an ever-fluid thing with housing in the state of California. I attended another session with Open Government and Conflicts of Interest, talked a lot about the Brown Act, Conflicts of Interest, and roles of city council, roles of city manager, and our duties to our voting base, so on and so forth. Very interesting. And then the last, I'll skip forward to the last one, it was the social media, which was very interesting. I love making sure I always get, see that one every year because it's, it's such an interesting session. They talk about the ever-changing world of social media and how it applies to cities and council and elected officials in general. And, and I just want to touch on a few facts. We were given some stats that were very interesting. It appears that society in general has now has less than attention span than goldfish. Apparently, human beings have an eight, eight-second attention span and goldfish have a nine-second attention span. So, we have become so impatient with technology. Another interesting stat was that YouTube has now matched Google as a search engine. There's more, there's just as many searches for YouTube for like how-to videos and that kinds of thing as there is on Google searches. And then, as it pertains to cities, we talked in great depth about, you know, social media really has become the platform for speech and exchange of ideas. More or less the town hall of our, of our, of our generation, and they really talked about cities embracing that and, and ways that we could do that as a city very efficiently and, and and there was a lot of good ideas exchanged. So, it was very interesting, and, and I'd love to do it again sometime if I had a chance. If anyone should ever be an elected official and attends, I would highly recommend that class and just to attend the academy in general because it's very informative. Other than that, I actually had a public safety meeting this past Monday last week, and a couple of things we discussed, we had a great presentation by one of our Galt PD officers on the use of drones and a drone program that Galt PD is interested in using, and that will be coming to the council, I think, soon. Just another piece of technology that will make our, our PD more effective, and I look forward to seeing that formally. And we talked about some traffic areas of concern, and we talked about electing a new chair person, which we tabled because we had a couple of participants that were missing on our meeting. So, other than that, on those, that's kind of the high points. And that'll do it for me. So, we will move on to do we need to ask for public comment, Frank, on this item? You don't, right?
No.
Just making sure. All right, moving on to item J, Our Information Consent Calendar. It is recommended that items one through seven be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. Does any of the council have any items they would like to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, I would like to pull actually item J four for a brief discussion. And with that, I will I'm going to open the public comment period on the consent calendar while I read the items. So, if someone would like to comment on any of these items, they may raise their hand on Zoom or on the phone and do so while I read these, and then I will call on you. Our consent counter items are J one, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of January the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Item two, Receive and File Warrants for Period Ending January the nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Item three is the adoption of a resolution approving the sub submission to CalRecycle of a Notice of Intent to Comply with S B thirteen eighty-three Regulations Pursued to S B six nineteen. Item five is the lease agreement with Blue Dog Distributing for Warehouse Space at one forty Enterprise Court in the City of Galt. Item six is A B three sixty-one Resolution Making Findings Necessary to Continue to Conduct Brown Act Meetings by Teleconference. And item seven, the Designation of Authorized Official to Execute Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Documents Related to Walker Park Phase Two A. I will entertain a motion to approve those six items.
We do have public comment?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Go ahead with the public comment.
Teresa McCord.
Good evening. I'd like to comment on topic J four, Tobacco Grant Award Acceptance.
Actually, Ms. McCord, if you want to hang on, we're actually going to approve the other six items, and then we're going to be discussing that item next. If you'd like to wait to comment on that particular item.
Sure, not a problem.
Do we have any other public comment, Tina?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, I will be closing the public comment period on the six items on the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilman Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Then calendar approved five two zero. All right, item J four is subject is the Tobacco Grant Award Acceptance. I, I just pulled this item because we talked briefly about this in our safety meeting, and I wanted to chief to just kind of just give a real quick kind of overview on what exactly we plan on doing with this money. Should we approve this?
Sorry about that. I was trying to get my background right. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item before you is a tobacco grant award, which we applied for in April of two thousand and twenty-one, after we did some analysis related to tobacco-related incidents in the school, and we noticed that there was an uptick citywide since two thousand and seventeen. And so, in two thousand and sixteen, Prop fifty-six awarded a funding source for these types of activities. And so, we submitted the grant, and actually, our S R O's Officer Castaneda and Officer Franklin wrote this grant on our behalf. We submitted it to the Department of Justice, and we were awarded a, a three-year grant to the tune of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Twenty-five thousand, eighty-five dollars of that is for the installation of eighteen, I guess, smoke detectors, vape detectors for the schools, eight at each of the high schools and two at Estralito. And then the remaining balance is split over the three-year period for decoy operations and community education, which will be done on overtime reimbursement through the grant. So, this item is before you for acceptance, so we can officially accept the money and participate in the program, which will go until July of two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, no problem.
Do we have any, I, public comment period is going to be open on this item now. If you would like to comment, you can please raise your hand on Zoom or on the phone, and we will call upon you. Do we have any public comment?
Okay, Teresa, can you?
Ms. McCord, go ahead now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
All right, thank you for that. Good evening, council members, city officials, and community members. My name is Teresa McCord. I work for Disney Health Medical Foundation as a service line manager for pediatrics for the Greater Sacramento Service Area. I also serve as the vice chair for our city council Safety Committee. However, I come to you tonight as a parent. A parent who has had to face one of the worst fears this past year with my teenage daughter. Now, to give you some backstory and tell you why I'm so passionate about this topic. My daughter throughout elementary school and middle school had always been an awesome student, honor roll, great athlete, and she was always reserved by her, by her teachers as a sweet and kind student. Late last year, her freshman year, I received a text from a family friend who told me that my daughter was vaping and that she had devices in her backpack. Finding this to be true, I knew it wasn't not the first time that she'd been vaping. This was just the first time that she'd been caught. So, how long had this been going on and how far down the spiral had she gone? I know now that it had been months, and by the time I'd found out that she was vaping, she had also begun acting out in other ways that were in the form of self-harm. She was vaping to numb her feelings, to suppress her anxiety, in addition to peer pressure. By the time all of this unraveled, we had to get immediate intervention and treatment. Now, do I blame vaping for all of this? No, I don't. But I often wonder, what would have happened if we would have caught this sooner? What if our schools had ways to intervene sooner, tools to help detect vaping? Could we have prevented a near-suicide attempt? Could we have gotten her resources sooner than having to go through a whirlwind of crisis? Maybe. And that maybe is why I'm here tonight. Some people say that vaping is harmless or is less dangerous than cigarettes. Well, here's some facts about teen vaping. Using nicotine in adolescence can harm the parts of their brain that control attention, learning, mood, and impulse control, and the brain develops until about age twenty-five. Each time a new memory is created or a new skill is learned, stronger connections or synapses are built between the brain cells. Young people's brains build synapses faster than adult brains. Nicotine changes the way that these synapses are formed. Using nicotine in adolescence may also increase the future addiction of other drugs. One pod is the equivalent to twenty cigarettes, and these devices are also used for marijuana products. Vaping causes severe lung illness and is responsible for sixty-eight deaths in twenty-nine states. The youngest death was fifteen years old. Teens are able to purchase these products from their cell phones through social media, as well as make purchases online regardless of the age restrictions. They are made to look like ordinary school supplies and can be hiding in plain sight. But there are very little resources out there for parents and schools to prevent underage vaping. We need to do better than that. We need to invest in our children and their future. After all, aren't they our most important thing in the world? We need tools to help our resource officers and school administrators in preventing underage vaping. We need to make it more difficult for them to obtain and use. After my daughter and her family had gone through that difficult situation, I learned from many of my neighbors and friends that they had gone through very similar things. This is not an isolated issue. This is not a school issue. This is an epidemic sweeping our country, and we need to do everything that is within our ability to help protect our kids. When I asked Mr. Laura and Officer Castaneda what I could do to help, they said they were trying to purchase vape detectors through a grant for both high schools. This would enable them to detect vaping fumes in real time, so that resource officers could be deployed in hopes of deterring and preventing underage vaping. So, members of the council, I implore you tonight to do more for the kids in this community and give our schools the tools they need in fighting against teen vaping. Please adopt the tobacco grant resolution.
Thank you, Ms. McCord, for your comments. Appreciate it. Do we have any other public comment?
No hands raised.
Okay. Again, public comment on this item is open. If you would like to speak, you can raise your hand now on Zoom, or you can press star nine on the phone, and we'll call on you. Do we have any hands raised, Tina?
No hands raised.
Okay, well, with that, I will go ahead and close the public comment period on this particular item. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, I will look for, actually, someone raise their hand? No, okay. I will look for a motion to approve item J for the Tobacco Grant Award Acceptance.
Move second.
I'm going to give the move to Councilman Papino, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Approved five to zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to item K, Schedule Matters. What is the public hearing? Do we have any this evening?
No public hearing.
All right. Moving on to item L, Our Regular Calendar. First items from City Manager's Office. Item one is going to be the coronavirus COVID nineteen update. Mr. Heinz? You're muted, sir, if you're there.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, hang on for just a second. I'm trying to pull up a document here. Hang on. Let's see. All right, well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Hoffman, do you have the document available?
All right, let me, let me.
All right, let me, let me see, I'm gonna have to go to my Outlook.
Yes, thank you.
I've got it up, do you?
Oh, do you want to, Tina?
Yeah, I got it. I have it.
That would be great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sorry.
No worries, no worries. Yeah, I had some technical issues on this end. Ms. Hubert, if you could share the presentation, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Let me pull it up here.
Okay.
Well, I did have it. We're having difficulties here.
Can you go over to your PowerPoint icon and see if, and click on that? There we go.
Did it go up?
Yes, it did. Okay, so tell you what, can you close, can you close that window? Very good, very good. All right, so the COVID nineteen update for February first, twenty twenty-two. We can move to the next slide, please. The number of cases in Sacramento County have gone up fifteen percent. The number of deaths in Sacramento County have gone up four percent. That's a hundred and two individuals. So this latest wave is still wreaking havoc on the population. Here in the city of Galt, the number of cases have gone up thirty-one percent or another fifteen hundred cases. And the number of deaths here in the city of Galt as a result of the COVID nineteen is up eight percent. And that's five individuals. Next slide, please. So Sacramento County, the daily case rate is a hundred and fifteen per one hundred thousand. And that's down from a hundred and eighty-seven point six for a hundred thousand on January eighteenth. So that's a dramatic decrease and I'm happy and I think we should all be happy to see that decrease. Area hospitals currently have five hundred ninety-five individual, number of individuals hospitalized with COVID nineteen. This is up from five hundred and forty-seven hospitalized on January eighteenth. Next slide, please. Thursday's COVID nineteen testing site in Galt will now be performed under a California state grant and will no longer be operated by funding from Sacramento County. The Friday and Saturday testing site continues to be conducted by curative. Residents can once again schedule appointments online or at Cure TV backslash Galt. So our testing site numbers, the total test for, again, this shows that the testing results from January thirteenth through January twenty-seventh. And as you can see, the total tests have gone down a little bit. Total rapid tests have gone down a little bit. Rapid positives have gone down and that's good to see. And then total PCR and PCR positives, again, that's gone down. So so far the trend is going in the right way. Next slide, please. Effective January sixth, the Sacramento County Health Officer issued an order directing public boards, councils, commissions and similar to conduct all meetings virtually. According to the January sixth health order, the county health officer is expected to reevaluate the need for this order. No later than February first. However, nothing has been reported as of two P M today. And next slide, please. Tina, thank you so much. And Mayor and members of the council, I'm available for questions to the extent that I can answer them.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment period for this particular item. Should we have any? If you are online, please raise your hand in Zoom or star nine on the phone. Do we have any questions from Mr. Heinz from the council? If you do, please raise your hand. I can see you. Tina, your screen, your inbox is open there.
Yeah, Tina, you can stop your share right now. Okay.
Okay, we've had, it looks like no questions from council. Do we have any public comment on this particular item?
We do have a hands raised.
Okay, go ahead and start with the first one.
Mr. Wenzel.
Mr. Wenzel, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, it's a, I know that COVID is a touchy subject and council members and managers have to walk a tight rope. I guess the two things, a couple of things as a constituent, when I hear the word prohibit and I hear the word directive and it comes from somebody I didn't elect, I'll just register my feelings on that as a constituent. I did not elect these people. I watched their, I've watched a lot of their meetings and all of that. They're nice people. I like their website for what it is. And of course, it could be better, but I appreciate everything everybody's doing. I thought I'd just point out a couple of statistics. I'll start with the total deaths since the beginning of the pandemic for those under nineteen years old. There is no category for under ten, but the total deaths is five. There's no color around that as to comorbidity for those children is sad, of course. And another thing that I think we all need to keep in mind, particularly me, because I'm almost seventy. And that is that eighty percent of all of the deaths in the county are people over sixty-five. Okay, so that's a, that's just a big stark number because the other number that most people, if you want to do this poll that I do with people, when I hear them talking about COVID, I just ask them. In Sacramento County with about one point five five million people, how many people do you think have died? Most people say, I'm not sure. And I said, well, I mean, what's your impression? You listened to all of this stuff. What do you think that number is? I get answers anywhere from fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand, which if you stopped and thought about it, we'd be, we'd see bodies everywhere. But the number is two thousand six hundred and ninety-six by the latest that I see. It's not a pretty number, but as Mr. Heinz mentioned, we don't know with COVID from COVID. So I just want to take somebody someplace, you know, I guess it's going to be me tonight. I know you guys are in a tough position and I don't know how we're going to get out of that position, but that's where we are. So, you know, there's sort of good news, bad news out of all this and I just, you know, I appreciate what everybody's doing. And just thought I would speak up and say, we need to do something as we go along. It's not going to end until we do something, I don't think. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Do we have another public comment, Tina?
No more hands raised.
Okay. Again, if you would like to speak on this item, you would need to raise your hand on Zoom or press star nine on the phone. I'll give just a few seconds more should someone want to do that. No further comment from council while we. Nope, okay. And no additional comments, Tina?
No more.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to item two, also from City Manager's Office. Subject is going to be the Saturday market hours. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Director Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Armando Solis Parks and Rec Director. So tonight we have the Saturday market hours. So at the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, city council approved a pilot monthly Saturday market. The hours of operation and duration of market were discussed and city council directed staff to place a poll on Facebook to determine if citizens would prefer a Saturday morning, midday or evening market and if they would prefer a four, five or six hour operation. So today I'm going to show you the outcome of that survey. So the question was asked, the city of Galt is planning a monthly Saturday market, April through October on the Fourth Street Promenade. And this is what we would be providing.
Director Solis, are you sharing your screen?
I thought I was.
Okay.
It's not.
Give me, this is second here. Tina, is he allowed to share? I'm sorry, City Clerk Hubert, is he allowed to share?
He's there. Can you see it?
Yes.
So there is a pretty graphic upfront that you guys missed. So here's the question that was posed on Facebook. And so how many hours would you like the Saturday market to be? The six hours was at thirty-eight percent and the four hours was at thirty-four percent. Based on the four hours, the ten to two was the big number at thirty-eight percent. On the five hours, ten to three at thirty-five percent. If I'm going through this too quickly, please let me know. I know it's a lot of numbers taken at this point. And then based on the six hours, eight AM to two PM, that one thirty-six percent, ten to four was close behind at thirty-three. In the staff court, we told you we would talk to some of the businesses and our partners. So here's the response from our businesses. We did not get a response from Brewster's or Velvet Grill. So you see Evening Market by Papa's and Wings, Back Alley Brew. Morning Market by Barsetti's Wine and Little Farmhouse. So some of these things that I've been, I've had comments on is people would like alcohol, beer and wine. That's really not a morning market type of, of activity. And along with our bands, so if we go Morning Market, you have to take that into account. And then our partnership, our San Juan County Certified Farmers Market Organizer said that it would be less of the certified vendors and, but he could still get our produce vendors. They would just not be certified. He's willing to work with us morning or night and the school district who we plan on doing some events with are flexible with the event times and excited about the partnership. So Jackie Garcia is online and she'd be happy to answer questions along with me. Or and I can go back to any slide if you'd like.
Thank you for the presentation, Armando's interesting statistics. Thank you for doing that, by the way. Again, effort to, you know, kind of involve the citizens in this. What I'm seeing is it seems that, I mean, obviously there was difference of opinions, but it seemed to be that regardless of the length of hours that most of the people in the poll kind of are kind of one, you know, you have a three P M end and then we had the other one was a two P M end. It seems like to me what I'm seeing is, you know, that it's, people are favoring more of a middle time-ish. I mean, definitely not favoring the evening time. I just want to share one thought real quick as I'm seeing these numbers and then I'm going to go to council and see if, you know, we can all have some discussion and see if it gets public comment. But, you know, I, I, I think about the times, like springtime, especially summertime where people are really out doing this kind of thing and I just my concern when I thought about these hours was that you know, it starts to get really hot, three, four o'clock. It's like the heat of the day. And so if we were to do like, say, I don't know, you have it up on the screen now. It's like attended to, for example, if that was one of the things, then we're, you know, I think we're, we're, maybe it's a sweet spot because we're people can come out before the heat of the day. It's not too cold because it's not in the morning. Also, you mentioned about the beer, totally agree with that and with the band. So you're kind of midday. So morning's kind of awkward with the band and the beer. So, I mean, I really kind of like the midday thing and I like to see some of these numbers support that, but that's my initial thoughts. I like to go to, first like to open public comment period, let everybody know if you're watching this, you would like to make public comment. I will call on you after some of the council members weigh in and so you can raise your hand on Zoom or star nine. So just letting the public know. If any of the council members, I can't see you all, but if anyone wants to raise their hand, start, Councilman Papinow, go ahead.
Thanks. So I'm always eager to hear more public input. So I appreciate the survey. However, if you consider the population of the city and the surrounding area that we expect to draw from, you're probably talking thirty thousand people. This survey represents less than, I believe, a tenth of a percent of those people. So while I value it, I hate to make it, you know, let it make our decision for us. It's, it's one small piece. And I would go on to say that in Mr. Solis and Ms. Garcia, we have, I think, more expertise on operating this and, you know, what they can expect as far as outcome. Pitfalls certainly more experienced than any of us. And for my thoughts, I think we need to let them take the information, both this and what they've had before and go out and make good results for us. I don't like the idea of sitting and trying to micromanage them. Whether it's based on, you know, this Facebook poll or any of our anecdotal thoughts. So that's, that's my thoughts and what I'd like to see.
Thanks, sir. I would like to point out four hundred and sixty-three, though, we recently had a consulting firm that we hired to do a survey for us on some other issue. And I recall the number was similar to this number and that was, they, I remember them vividly saying that that was a pretty strong number and that they usually only get like a thousand people polled statewide when they do polls. So I think four hundred and sixty-three is a strong number. I was actually more than I expected.
Mayor, mayor, if I, if I can just offer some advice and some caution, that effort was done for a different set of reasons. And that was done by professional pollsters. And so I just wanted, you know, just wanted to just, you know, we're talking two different things here.
No, I know that, but I'm, I'm comparing it as to a professional poll that what we were told by professionals came back and said that the number of people they polled was a very high number in their opinion. It was a solid number and it was comparable to this number. So I'm just only using that as a benchmark to the fact that thirty thousand people, you know, I, I with Mr. Papinow, he said, you know, we have thirty thousand people and it's five hundred to get snapshot. And although it may not seem like it in the world of polls, I, I've been told that it actually is a really good number. Anyways, I'm just not just trying to discredit anything you said. We got Councilman Papinow just only just weighing in on that.
No, and, and I would agree, total number is correct. But the, a scientific poll, there's something to the selection and it's not yeah, pushed by people putting something on social media with an agenda and soliciting people to go vote for things and those kind of influences. So total number, sure. Scientific selection and polling, no. So I, and I left that part out when I first spoke, so thank you.
Any other council members want to speak or I can go to public comment or see if there is any public comment? Vice Mayor Sandu. Vice Mayor, if you would like to speak, your microphone is muted.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Solis. You know, you get the survey out there and you get the results. I believe the reason I was asking especially to get the, you know, survey from our own community. So anything I would like to do if the community agrees. So this survey not, maybe not a hundred percent right, but this survey can get us kind of idea what our constituency, what our citizen wants to do. One thing, like in the most of the survey, they said from ten to two. Especially when I listening from our Mr. Solis, yes, there is alcohol involved with this, some others, just like in ten o'clock might be, we have to push back to there a little bit later. Ah, maybe this is kind of my, maybe twelve to six. The one more thing, please, can you look at the next slide where is say six hour? uh, six hour? Mr. Slise.
I'm sorry, can you see the screen? It says, uh,
No, I'm telling you, where is say four hour, five hours, six hours?
So this is six hours? There's, oh, you mean the, the?
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, uh, and also, uh, the six hour is most of, uh, city advanced to open it. And I believe I'm looking at, uh, uh, at the report, uh, of Mr. Slise. The only thing if we changing from four to six hours, I believe we losing thousand dollar more, right? Right on this?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. And I believing in, uh, you know, I'm agree with you, you know, the, all this four hour, five hour or six hour. M and O will be the same. Uh, point and staffing will be increased. Uh, uh, we understand if we changing from four to six hour is the third thing is revenue. I would believe even a fraction of positive, the revenue should be increased if we uh, I'm, if we changing from four to six. And I believe on the report said revenue will not increase. There is any particular region, uh, if we opening that two hour extra, the under you talking about, there can be anything, even a fraction will increase the revenue or no?
I don't believe by increase of the hours will, uh, increase the revenue by attracting more vendors. Uh, may I point out, um, our current Galt Market that attracts thousands and thousands of people from the region is a seven hour market and that's a long market, um, with a lot of our vendors complaining that it's too long. Um, so it, um, yeah, I mean, that, that's where we are with our golf market.
Okay. So, so, so that's mean within, if we increasing the two more hour, so there will be no extra customer will come to, uh, that, that time.
The, the customer, we're not making the money from the customer. We're making the money from the vendors. So there would be no increase in, in revenue from that. Um, I'm not sure, uh, more people would come if it's extended for two hours.
Right. All right. And that's, uh, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Slise.
Mister Mayor, um, I, I realize Councilmember Vandenberg is up, but I just wanted to emphasize a point that Director Solis just made. The revenue was driven by the vendors. And so I just wanted everybody to keep that in mind. So while we want to make sure that this is a opportunity for the public to participate, we also want to make sure that the revenue is there and that the services are there. And so the vendors have a large stake and have a large influence over how we operate. I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think it's important to, uh, I, I like the six hours and I would like to see it start at ten. I think that would allow people that want to avoid the summer heat, time to show up. People that would like to enjoy a libation can go to a local business and do that as well. Uh, I think it gives the widest variety of options to our citizens. Uh, and it showed clearly that, you know, uh, the expenses are nominal compared to a four hour. Um, that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Um, do we have any public comment just to check in, um, in the middle of our discussion here? Do we have any hands raised, Tina?
Mister Wenzel has his hands, hand raised.
Okay, Mister Wenzel, go ahead.
Since I only use Zoom once in a while, uh, but since I have the floor, I, I just want to say I'm pretty impressed with the, uh, recreation department lately. Uh, man, there's some motivated guys out there. Uh, as far as the, we're talking about on the promenade, right? I'm a little bit behind on this subject. Are we talking downtown? Are we talking at the Galt Market?
Promenade, uh, Brewsters.
Yeah, okay, so I think as, as far as what Sean Farmer brought up, I think that it can get brutal out there. So when you do it is very important. Shade is very important. And then, um, I like the idea, if you're gonna have the libations, push it over to the, the, you know, the people that are downtown that have their stores. I like that idea. Um, I, I hope there's enough parking down there. I was over at Galt Market today and it was not a real big day. I mean, there's a lot of wind out there and a few of those covers falling off and, you know, being torn off, but that's about all I have. I, I think that it's in the right direction, but I, I also agree that the experts are Armando and Jackie Garcia. So I think whatever they came up with, I would be, I would be favoring that. I would throw it in the hands of the experts there. Uh, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wenzel. Do we have any other comment, Tina, at this time?
Eric, can I make a comment?
Uh, yeah, hang on a second, Armando, just make sure we don't have another public comment.
No more hands raised.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Slise.
So one thing that I wanted to point out on this slide is that, um, you know, you're at thirty-eight percent at six hours and thirty-four percent here. You could just cut it in half and go at a five hour also. Um, but I just wanted to point that out in case you missed it, just because it's, like I said, you guys didn't have time to digest these numbers. Um, and I just wanted to point that out. That is what really caught me, uh, caught my eye on this slide. And then, um, you know, I, I promise you that we'll give everything we have into whatever times you guys choose. And we'll, we'll figure out something to make it work.
I appre- I appreciate that, Armando. And, and I, and I do, do agree with you on this particular slide here. It's kind of like, you know, it's, you, you kind of have that like, you know, real close percentage on all of the majority six, but thirty-four is very close with the other extreme, which is the four hours. I, I think just for me, I'm less hung up on the amount of hours as I am about when the hours are. Um, I, I would be open-minded to a five hour to compromise or a six hour. I mean, Mr. Vandenberg was, you know, six hour, I, I would go with that. I would also go with the five. Uh, I, I would lean more towards the five or the six than the four, but I, I, I I am of the mind that I really like the middle of the day. I, you know, I, as you all know, I own a four street business. I, I I, I can only compare to what we did with the farmer's market, but we don't really, um, there was not really, uh, there wasn't really an impact. Uh, we very rarely saw an impact for our business, but thinking about like the brewery and Brewsters and, you know, you have businesses that really cater towards an evening. I think that, um, I think it would be a very uh, fluid thing to have an event that wraps up, you know, say at three o'clock, for example, leaving time for those people to, to then now transition over to say Back Alley Brew House and have some drinks or they transition over to Brewsters. I, I, I don't really like the idea of it overlapping with those other businesses because I think if you're gonna have beer at this, at this, um, market, you know, on the promenade at, you know, six o'clock at night, I think you're just gonna be kind of taking away from the customers of those other pla- I just, and then you have a parking issue because then you have Brewsters and you have Back Alley and they, you know, tend to do most of their business in the evening. So then you're vying for parking. That's why I really like the idea of having it during the day and it's more like, uh, it reminds me of like, uh, extravaganza we used to have where it was really a fun event and people could come down and it was kind of in the middle. And I think about, you know, one of your months is gonna be like a barbecue theme. So I kind of think about, you know, if it's, has that middle of the day, it can be like a lunch. Um, you're not in the heat of the day, like Mr. Wenzel mentioned. I can tell you and I, I know that you guys remember in the summer months, you know, the first two hours of farmer's market was really dead when it was hot. I mean, so you're talking your five and six o'clock. There's like nobody out there. And you started seeing people ramp up like around seven, but by then the market, you know, was almost finished. So you'd get like an hour to maybe hour and a half of your prime uh, participation time. I worry about that going through the summer hours and, and as you know, with our climate, you know, we still get hot days into September and even October. Um, so I think we have, there's a greater span of time in our client, in our area of, of, of hotter days than there is of colder days. I think the sweet spot really is this middle, you know, and I'm, and I'm open-minded to hear what you guys like to do. I would actually like to ask and I, and I appreciate, uh, Jackie and Armando's opinion and I want to ask you guys in a second here what you think, but I would actually like to ask Amy Mendez what she thinks if she's listening on here. Um, I know she's very active in, you know, um, businesses and she's been exposed to things like this in other towns and stuff. I would love to her hear her take on this. Are you there, Amy? I don't know if she's logged off. Well, if she comes back on, I'd love to hear from her.
No, I'm still here. My apologies. I have a new puppy that I'm chasing around my office right now who is not cooperating.
Sorry, I caught you off guard when it wasn't your, your.
No, you are completely fine. Um, you know, I in, in kind of talking about, and we put the survey together, um, I'm really familiar with the um, market that was held in downtown Tracy. And so the market in Tracy has been wildly successful in downtown and it starts at eight in the morning and it goes until one o'clock in the afternoon. And so people shop typically for produce or, um, you know, artisan goods, arts and crafts. But it is a, I, I mean, it's a bustling market. Everybody knows it happens at eight in the morning. They go early before it gets hot. And their market goes year round. And so, um, you know, I think regardless of when you have it, it's really the product variety and what people are looking for is really what's gonna be important. And so, um, with regards to what the input is from everybody, um, in the community as a, you know, resident in where I live at, um, you know, if I knew the market happened at a certain time, that's when I would show up. I would make a point to go there if they were selling things that I wanted to see. Um, the alcohol is always, you know, I think something that people, um, would like to see, but in the evening on a Saturday night, most of the time people have plans. And so I don't know necessarily if that's a realistic idea. Um, so like I said, my comparison would go back to what was done, um, in the city of Tracy and starts at eight in the morning. It is early. Um, but Saturdays, a lot of people want to get out and shop and kind of get their, you know, their farmer's market goods purchased um, early and before it gets hot because most people have plans in the afternoon on Saturday. So um, that would be my feedback with regards to that topic.
Well, thank you. I, I do appreciate hearing that. Um, Garcia, I, um, what are your thoughts with this survey and, and, and you, I would like to hear from you.
Well, um, well, I was surprised on the survey and the response that we got. I, I am glad we were able to connect with the businesses downtown and get their feedback. And, um, their flexibility and willing to, um, still partner with us on the timing. Um, I know as far as I could see for myself and my event team, we're excited on whatever direction we get um, to be able to push out and get more vendors and continue the partnerships that we have with the businesses.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Can, can I comment?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Go ahead. I get, I didn't see who was talking. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, I, I think you made a really good point earlier, um, that if we do something earlier, not to overlap with the businesses. Um, you know, that, that sweet spot in the morning where they can transition into an early dinner or some early drinks. Um, you know, it looks like everybody wants a, a mid-morning to early morning market. And I, I think what you, what we have up on the screen right now might fit. You know, we, we could still do things with that timing. Um, and like I said, it, it goes into what you said about the transition into the, the other stores and businesses on Four Street. Versus over, you know, them competing against each other.
Yeah. And I was thinking as Amy Mendez was speaking, you know, she was talking about the eight AM and I, 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 I think it really, you know, I think it just depends on what the event is because you, you could define a market as like if it's a street fair or it's this or it's a flea market. And if you give it six different titles, then there's actually more appropriate times for each of those identities. So that's why it is kind of difficult because this thing, although we're kind of projecting what's, what its identity is going to be, we're not really certain exactly what it may become or what it could evolve into. We're just, it's just obviously we're kind of waiting into this, you know, you know, waiting and slowly, you know, both feet kind of filling it out. So I think that's what's kind of tricky about this because when I ask people, they're like, well, well, before I answer a question, what's gonna be there? And I, I think that dictates people answer. Um, I, I think, you know, I, I look at the eight o'clock. I think, I don't know, I see the ten. I would be open-minded to support the ten. I would also be open-minded to supporting like a nine, maybe we just split in the middle. But let me ask you this, Mr. Solis. Um, I know there was talk about alcohol and music and such. I mean, could it be that we have, you know, let's say that we do the ten to three, just for example. Could it be that we start at ten o'clock, but maybe the music, you know, the, the band maybe doesn't start till eleven? Or, uh, the Beer Garden doesn't start till, you know, eleven or, I mean, we don't have to have everything that we're gonna have at these events be the whole time, right? I mean, couldn't we have a little overlap of a couple of different, like maybe two different things that are special to that time, but one is more their first thing? And then the others kind of, I mean, isn't there a possibility to do that too?
Oh, no, absolutely. We, we've already kind of talked about that and how we would plan it. We'd have the entertainment more towards the, the end, maybe like a one to three with, um, you know, right next to a beer garden, um, and do some more appropriate things for the morning part of the market.
Okay. So I, I'd love, do we have any, uh, public comment? I'm gonna keep checking in on that. Excuse me.
No hands raised.
Okay. Um, well, I'd like to hear from some of my other council members, but I, I really, I'm really open-minded to like a fi- five hour or six. But I'd be open-minded to either one of those, depending on what the majority of us want. And the ten to three or like a nine to three, whatever. I do think the three for me, I kind of like the three PM cutoff because I feel like you're gonna really get it, start to having people pack up before the, before the heat of the day hits. Um, I don't know. Any, any other, I know some of us have spoke already, but, um, any of the council want to weigh in on what they've heard from, uh, Ms. Mendez and Ms. Garcia and Mr. Solis?
I, I think they've all made good points. Uh, it's up to us now. I mean, we're here for direction. So it's up to us to decide. You know, um, maybe how many hours and what time to start and, you know, as far as beer gardens and bands, I, I would gladly leave that up to the professionals and, you know, Mr. Solis and because sometimes it's just a matter of who can schedule what, when. So for me, I, I'd like to stick to just the start times and the duration.
Yeah. Um, Councilor Lazzano, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um, so my take on this is, um, I, I appreciate the work that staff has done in the last two weeks to to gather additional information on, on what the desires of, uh, a portion of the community are. Um, and I think they've, I think they've, uh, come to some, um, or since the synthesized this data and come to some additional, um, pieces of information that will help the events that they're planning to be productive. Um, you know, I think, I think last meeting, um, we, we, we made the policy decision to have it. Um, and that's, that's where our role is. And so, um, my, my take on it is let's do whatever we can get the most community members there to do and the, the best and most vendors and allow our staff to run with it. Um, and, and do a good job. I, I, I just, I struggle with having this detail of conversation at a, at a council meeting when, in reality, we, we've already, we've already made the decision to do it. So let's just get it done. Um, but having said all that, I do have, uh, extreme faith in, in, in our staff and as Mister Wenzel pointed out, um, people, I, I too believe that they can do a good job and and take, uh, take the bull by the horns and, and make it work. So I'm comfortable with anything. Um, and I just want a market and it looks like we're gonna do it. So, um, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Let me ask you this, Mr. Solis. So do you have any, beans that, you know, there's been two of the council members have expressed, you know, that they want to see more of this dictated by yourselves? And I think there's a couple of us that are, you know, wanting to be more weighing in on this and, and I respect all that. Um, do you, how do you feel about, in your opinion, what do, what are your personal feelings, you and Jackie, as the people that are, you know, spearheading this? About going with the ten AM to three PM with the five hour? Would that be something that you would feel comfortable with or do you not? I mean, I want you to be frank with us.
I have faith in myself and Jackie and our staff that we can make anything work. Um, if it's your desire to go mid-morning, we'll, we'll have to sit down and really pencil some things out because we, like I said, we had all our events targeted towards the evening, you know, with the music, with the, the beer. But this is something that we can do also at between ten and three. We just need to figure out the logistics. But this is something that we can do also at between 10 and three. We just need to figure out the logistics of it, the timing of it and the availability of it, of of some of the vendors.
Okay, well, I I would entertain entertain another idea from anyone, but if no one's going to, if no one wants, if people are kind of open minded, I would like to suggest that we try out the 10 to three. And again, I again, open to hear from my four constituents, uh, if they want to make a a different something there, but I would say compromise between the four and the six and go with the five hour, do a 10 to three. Um, that's what, that's what I would like to see. That's, that's my, that's my vote. I think my direction. But he, does anybody want to, Mr. Vandenberg?
Thank you. Um, I I could support that. I I would like to see it longer. My most importantly is to serve the people. And in the long run, we want to generate enough support that it can expand and grow and become profitable. So you know, giving the citizens the largest options, I think is important, but I certainly could support a 10 to three.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm agree with everybody, you know, opinion is a 10 to three. But you know, most of our survey says six hour. If there is a possibility for 10 to four, I'm leaning towards, but otherwise I'm agree with you guys, whatever your decide.
Well, I'm just looking for a consensus here. I again, I I, you know, that's just my suggestion. I but, um, if you, if you, Councilman Vanderberg are are okay with, uh, 10 to three, I know that Councilman Papinow and and Lozano have expressed that they're willing to, um, put more of the decision process, uh, decision making into the, in the staff hands. So I I respect that. Um, it's just why I was trying to get their their take. So, um, am I, Mr. Cap, Mr. Papinow, go ahead.
You know, yeah, I I I'm not going to take a position on the details of time of day or length. Because, you know, as I stated before, I think they have the expertise. They came up with the plan. We made the decision, you know, for them to operate, operating is is their job. And, you know, success or failure, they're going to get credit or blame. And if there's a failure, uh, you know, people who pushed for certain hours or certain things based on, you know, their anecdotal beliefs, you know, are certainly not going to be willing to step up and say, oh, well, that was wrong. So, you know, I still say they're the ones that are, they're on the hook for it. And we're the ones that hired them to do a job. And I think they should take this information and everything that they have in their experience and expertise and, uh, and do what they think is going to be the most successful.
Well, and I and I respect you. I respect that. Um, but I think that, you know, we were the ones that kind of were pushing to to have, uh, something on the weekend. So I think that, you know, the fact that we were driving this, I think, you know, I feel like we should, you know, and I and I'm not afraid to say if this is not successful these hours. I'm, we're all in this together. I mean, this is not just like, oh, well, Parks and Rec, you know, they just didn't know whatever, or it's all the council's fault. All of us are in this together. This is, this is a task that we all, we we win or we fail together. Um, and so I I would, I'm willing to accept that and take that onto my shoulders. I would like to move forward with the 10 to three. That's my, I I think, I, you know, and again, I think there's always some tweaking that could be done as we go through. Uh, you know, later on and reevaluate where we're at. But if the, if the, if our staff thinks that they could make a 10 to three, uh, if they were willing to go forward with that and and make it go with that and and they're confident in their team, then that's what I would like to see. Councilman Vandenberg?
You know, anybody that's willing to answer the question, but at this point, it's our responsibility to uh, give direction, meaning in my eyes, that means selecting a time of day. And and that's, that's simply direction that we were asked to provide, correct?
I think, I think we have enough consensus here to move. Uh, I think we all agree. You know, the market, it's going to move forward like, like Rich said, um, which is a good thing. Um, three of us seem to have a consensus on the hours. Uh, you know, Kevin, um, sorry, Councilman Papinow is, you know, really leaving it up to staff. Staff seems to concede that it, that these hours are workable. So I think, I mean, I think, are we done here? I mean, I think, are you happy with the direction we've given you, Mr. Solis?
10 to three, um, on Saturdays and move forward on Fourth Street Promenade.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment, Tina, since we've been discussing?
No hands raised.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period on this. And, uh, I don't know. I mean, this was not, uh, sorry, let me go back to my page I was on here. Um, so we were just providing directions. So no formal action. I think we've given that. Is it the direction clear enough, Mr. Heinz?
The direction is clear.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your input. And again, thank you, staff, um, for, for, um, he, for, um, you know, doing this for us and, uh, making this effort. And, uh, I wish you success. So moving on to our next item, Human Resources Department, we have, um, subject is going to be the approval of amended permit technician one slash two job specification to establish an entry level position. Uh, Ms. Van Stein.
Uh, yes. Good evening again, Council. I'm going to see if I can share my screen. I can't seem to find it. Oh, this is the packet. Oh, here we go. Sorry about that. Um, okay, uh, what we have before you this evening is an amended job description for our permit technician. Um, what we would like to do is create an entry level. So our existing permit technician is more of a journey level. It requires two years of building or permit experience. Um, what, uh, the Community Development Department would like to do is create a level one. Um, in addition to that, right under the journey level. Um, we did meet with the Galt Public Service Unit Bargaining Unit a couple of months ago. They represent this job classification and, um, their union was very supportive of the change. Uh, we all think that it will broaden our eligibility pool when we have vacancies. Um, we also think it opens the door for advancement for any of their existing um, GPSU members that might qualify at the entry level permit technician level one. Um, we did discuss with them the proposed salary that we're recommending, um, which is up here on the staff report. Um, so we're recommending with the level one, we would place it at wage grade thirty four. Um, and that's similar to the Public Works Supply Technician Position and also the Water Systems Operator One position at the city. And the existing permit technician, we're not recommending any salary change. Um, again, we're just recommending a job title change for that. On the fiscal analysis, um, there is no fiscal impact. We're not asking for any kind of budget amendment. Um, because in the Community Development, um, Department Budget, it's already approved um, that they can have the permit technician. Um, so that's already established in their budget. And with that, I can open it up to any questions that you might have.
Sorry, just trying to, sorry, just trying to turn my video back on. Uh, Councilman Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions and I apologize for not getting these to you, um, questions to your earlier, Miss Van Stein. Uh, so this, the this process is a meet and confer process with labor, correct?
It is. Yeah. Any, any time that we're amending the requirements or significant changes to a job description, we do have to meet with the bargaining unit.
Okay. And, uh, the other question is the, um, in terms of, uh, the job salary classification, and I don't want to open up a big can of worms. Uh, but I may here, uh, how does that type of job classification compare, um, to similar responsibilities within the city? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Um, it it is matching to, and we, we basically placed it as based on internal equity within our organization. Um, and so I would say it's similar to the Water Systems Operator One, um, which is an entry level job classification because we also have a Water Systems Operator Two. Um, and if you can see it actually on the salary schedule here, where the Water Systems Operator Two is the same level as the permanent technician two.
Okay. And then, uh, lastly, I just, um, I don't want to assume anything, but I just, uh, want to ask that that the, uh, the bargaining unit was in agreement with this process and, uh, the fact that, um, this will provide some additional upward mobility for their their unit members?
Yes, that's exactly right. They were very happy when we took it to them. I mean, this is really, um, these are the kind of things that they do bring up when we have meetings with them. They they understand the importance of growth from within the organization. Um, so they were very pleased with that.
Well, I I thank you for the work on this. Um, I have no other questions, but I also want to thank Mr. Hoffman uh, for taking a look at this internally within his own department and and creating additional opportunities for, uh, both recruitment and retention. And and, you know, we talk about recruitment and retention of of many different classifications, but but, uh, I think some of the other ones that are are less, um, out in the public, uh, are important to 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 continue to do. And so, uh, thank you, Mr. Hoffman and, uh, Miss Van Stein for the, your work on this. I appreciate it. And I have no other questions and I'm willing to support this.
I could, if I could respond back to, uh, Councilman Lozano's, I would love to take ownership of this, but I actually can't. It starts with Armando basically saying, we have amazing part-time employees that really want the opportunity to work for the city of Galt in a full-time position. And I had the opportunity to steal a great staff member from him, and I'm sorry about that, Armando. And it also goes back to our city manager talking about investment in our employees. And again, upward mobility, and we just have so much, so many talented people and they just need an opportunity. And this is what this is really about is opportunity. So again, I'd like to to take the the credit for being gifted, but I'm going to have to give it to other people. All, I will take credit that Nicole Blossman is just amazing. She's doing a fantastic job for us. Uh, this is a position in our department. We've had, uh, two people turnover in two and a half years and it's an investment in our community. It's hiring somebody who's going to be here and I'm excited about what our staff's looking like in community development.
Well, I, and and, uh, I appreciate that. And you're, you're supposed to humble, but you are the director of community development and, uh, that's where this lies. Um, I do like, uh, in addition, I do like, uh, the fact that we're doing some cross pollination and and I know you've stolen some folks and and other departments have stolen from from other departments, but that's a good thing. Uh, because they will, they will come back and and if we continue to train our staff and and, uh, provide upward mobility where they, they all seem to come back around, right? Even if they leave. So, um, I appreciate that and, uh, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Are we going to need to start like a free agency program with some of our employees? They're going to be trading teams as often as this?
Usually it's Parks and Rec and Public Works that trade employees.
Are we going to institute a salary cap?
There'd be any of the, everybody's going to line up and everybody gets to pick their team, you know, like when you were kids. I picked so and so. So, all right, Mr. Vandenberg, you have a comment?
You know, uh, everybody basically, uh, took care of my question. The city's going to provide, uh, more opportunity to employees while, uh, giving themselves, you know, better opportunity to fill needs. So it's hard not to support that. Thank you.
So I I have a question, Ms. Van Stein, just so I'm understanding this, I mean, for the people at home. So we don't necessarily have a per, a technician. So the only, we don't have a technician one and two positions. We just have one. And the understanding the way I'm reading the staff report is that that the 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 experience and the job that the that the only technician person is doing is is more in line with a permit to uh, like a upper, not an entry level, but a more of a second level position. So what you're wanting to do is basically reward that person's do, what they're doing now with their job with a more appropriate wage that should be more in line with what they're doing. And then by, and so in order to do that, you create a lower position in entry level. And even though we don't have someone, uh, necessarily, we're not actually hiring for that as of this moment, we could eventually in the, in the future fill that. Does that, is that about right?
So what happened, um, in this particular case, um, Craig lost somebody to another agency. And so when he was, uh, looking at opening the position up, um, we had some good internal candidates in the Parks and Rec Department, but they were not going to meet the minimum qualifications to qualify at our permit technician, um, which is a journey level. And so we started looking at other agencies and a lot of other agencies do have a level one as an entry level first and a level two. Um, so he ended up hiring someone as an office assistant. Um, so she's, uh, I don't know how long she's been in that position, at least a few.
September.
Say.
Since September, yeah.
Oh, September. Um, so she's learning, uh, the front, the counter there and the permit technician responsibilities. Um, within a year, she will qualify at the level one.
Okay. I just trying to understand that, you know, I I make, kind of made sense, but I just trying to understand and and just for the record, you know, Armando wasn't the only one that got, they got, um, a bad deal shake out of that. Out of that. So anyways, all right. I support, I I I've, I support what we're looking at here and I think it's the right thing to do. And I I I applaud, um, you know, management for allowing the the, the, you know, the opportunity for people to be able to progress up in in our city and not become complacent in one spot. So I think it's good to retain people. So I I I don't have any issue with this and I would support it.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, ye- yes, sir. Go ahead, Ms. Heinz.
Um, I also wanted to point out for the public viewing that back on January eighteenth, Council, uh, Council, um, uh, adopted the strategic plan for the next couple of years. One of the items in that plan was a priority regarding internal succession planning. So I wanted to see, I wanted the public to be able to see the nexus between the policy decisions that Council made with those strategic plans and staff actually, uh, doing specific actions to accomplish that policy. And, uh, so this action falls under the internal succession planning, uh, priority. And that's all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for sharing that. Indeed. Um, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to make a comment. Uh, thank you, Van Stein. And also thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Uh, on this agenda item is very clear. So I will support in that. That's all.
All right.
Great. Thank you.
So do we need, uh, do we need a formal vote on this? Uh, it doesn't say formal action.
Frank, I'm not sure. We did prepare a resolution.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, on the agenda, it doesn't state as an, as an action item, uh, but although it seems like it is.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, um, you are approving the amended position and there's a resolution. So just a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Would be in order.
Okay. Uh, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay, if you would like to make public comment, again, raise your hand if you're viewing on Zoom or you can press star nine if you are calling on the phone. The number is posted on the agenda. I'll give a few seconds more to allow for a public comment before we wrap up that period. All right. Do we have any public comment?
No hands raised.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll close public comment on this item and I'll look for a, uh, motion to uh, approve the, approve the establishment of a permit technician, one job classification and amend the existing permit technician job classification to be renamed permit technician two. Approve the proposed job specification and establish a Approve the proposed job specification and establish a salary range for permit techion, technician one.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lozano and I will second that. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papna.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Uh, approved five to zero. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our next item, Public Works Department. Item is going to be the sewer lateral maintenance ordinance amendment. Mr. Selling?
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. I'm trying to hopefully get my screen up here. Does that look right?
Does to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. You can see the, the, just the one slide I take it? No?
No, we can see the whole PowerPoint screen.
Oh, okay. Uh, let's try this again, maybe. Doesn't seem to want to go to the full slide. So I guess we'll make do.
Mike, why don't you just go with the, the, the PowerPoint screen and we'll, you can just sort of page your way through it.
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay. All right. So good evening again. Uh, and this item is to consider uh, amending the language of the city sanitary sewer connection ordinance. Yeah, hopefully this will advance. I'll do it this way. So some background, the city's uh, sewer connection ordinance was last updated in two thousand and nine. That update added language that gave the city authority to abate a blockage issue on the private property if it was determined that blockage or issue was creating an imminent health and safety risk. Uh, though no context uh, beyond that uh, was given for the change in the ordinance at that time. It was mainly a part of uh, several ordinance updates uh, that were, that were done. The city, uh, the city's current ordinance wording requires the property owners to maintain the full limits of the lateral line, i.e. from the home all the way to the main line out in the uh, in the street uh, with regard to blockages. However, the key issue in the current ordinance uh, language is that unless caused by the property owner, the city is required to replace damaged or deteriorated portions in the city right of way at city expense rather than the property owner. This came up a few months ago through Public Works responding to multiple sewer blockage calls that we received. So following those calls and looking at our language and seeing that it was the city's responsibility, uh, we did some checking around with the other agencies as to what uh, their situation is and where they assign responsibility. And so what we found from checking around is that responsibility varies. Uh, some jurisdictions are the same as, as Galt uh, as our current ordinance. And for example, Elk Row, uh, who's uh, served by the regional sanitation district, uh, they are the same as us to where in the city right of way or uh, that the uh, the sewer agency is responsible for replacing or repairing damaged lines. While others, uh, and the city of SAC uh, is a prime example in our area, uh, basically puts the responsibility on the property owner entirely. Um, so the other thing that we found out is in some jurisdictions, and this is primarily the case in the Bay Area, where the water table is high, it's near the, the surface typically within a few feet to, to several feet of the surface. What happens is if you get a, a line that's damaged, uh, broken where that groundwater can get in, uh, it's additional uh, water volume that the city or agency has to treat through their treatment plant. And so what they have opted in those areas to do is to take that responsibility for repairing those lines. Uh, because it's a lot cheaper to repair them than it is to treat, you know, an ongoing uh, leak of groundwater. So so anyway, for us, uh, having had a few issues come up last fall and starting our rate study, uh, the question, the policy question essentially has come up as to whether we want to keep the same uh, uh, situation to where the city would repair, replace those damaged lines in the city right of way. Or if we want to change our ordinance language and shift that to the property owner. And, and the, you know, I guess the connection there is if we leave it as is, we'll need to build that cost, uh, those costs for doing those, uh, those line repairs and replacements into the new rates. And, and the other thing about it is, uh, so if we keep it the same way it is with city staff uh, making those repairs, uh, it puts the burden on our uh, staff and equipment resources. Because uh, as we can all understand that any sewer uh, line blockages are, require immediate attention. It's not something you can put off and schedule, you know, next week or something. So so this slide. And hopefully you can see that, uh, this shows a, a lateral, typical lateral connection uh, graphically. So you can see the home and I'll try to use my cursor here to hopefully help out. So the home or private property, here's the lateral connection to that uh, that uh, structure. And basically runs out down to the city main, which is in the street. This is depicted as the gray area here would be the, the public street. In that line, there's typically one or, or a couple of cleanouts. Uh, this is for, you know, uh, if someone has a blockage, as, as our ordinance states, that uh, they would typically get a plumber to come and, sorry about that, to come and unblock that. And that's how they access it is through those cleanouts. So the dividing line really comes at the property line. Uh, blockages the whole way are the, are the uh, property owner's responsibility, but any repairs or damages become uh, the city's uh, responsibility. Basically, you know, from the property line out to the street or any damages or, or repairs um, behind the property line are the property owner's responsibility. So this is the language that's in the uh, in the current ordinance. Yeah. What you're seeing here is the proposed changes if, uh, if we were to shift the responsibility. And the new language, new text is underlined, as you can see here within the premises. And text proposed to be deleted is shown as a strike through on this. And so that's essentially the change that we're uh, uh, putting forth to the council for a potential uh, policy shift on this. And so with that, uh, Mayor and council members, uh, that concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
Mike?
Sure. You see that?
Yeah. So I'm just trying to, somebody's got their uh, mic on or there an echo back here? Okay. Um, so I'm just trying to understand here. So currently what you're saying is that there's a blockage uh, from the house to the, to, to, to the, to the main line, to the main street, to the street. Um, the, the property owner is responsible for having plumber come out, use the cleanouts or whatever and clear the blockage, actually all the way even under the street to the main. But if there is a dammit, but if the pipe is damaged, uh, say like from the sidewalk where the property owner's property ends out to the street, if there's damage to that, then the city then makes that repair to the pipe. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's exactly accurate, Mayor. Yes.
Okay. So you're, and we're wanting to shift that to where it says that not only are they responsible for cleaning and clean out all the way to the, to the uh, to clean out their whole line all the way to, to the main line, but if there is a breakage or whatever, we want that responsibility to shift onto the property owner. That's what we're looking at doing with this?
Yes, that's the, that's the suggested change. And uh, and again, it's uh, and I probably didn't say it uh, real well before, but essentially when we look at these types of issues, we look at what is the public, you know, benefit or risk. And so when you look at a sewer line that's su- serving a, you know, a private property, that lateral is really, there's no risk to the public. Um, if it were to become blocked or damaged, it's really, you know, the property owner is the one who's benefiting uh, from that, that lateral line. So unless there's a case like I noted, you know, with the uh, the near surface groundwater.
Okay. It says here, uh, you know, uh, property owner sewer, and it says unless such damage was caused by the city or its representative. So what I'm, what I'm concerned with is the language there. Like, can you pull that slide up that shows the, the, the uh, picture of the home and the pipe?
Yes.
So my concern would be here, let's say that property owner, I'll wait till you get that picture out.
Oh, did I get it? Sorry, there you go.
So my concern would be here is let's say property owner has a blockage and he's like, you know, I got a plumber out, we've done the clean out over and over and we're still having issues. We think that, you know, after ex, after expenses to the homeowner, they've determined that maybe there's something wrong, you know, with the pipe. I could completely understand like the pipe, if it's damaged under the, the homeowner's property, that it should be totally absolutely responsible. But for me, I just, I, I kind of have a struggle with saying that the property should be responsible for a pipe. When you get out under the sidewalk, under the tree, what if that tree, for example, between the sidewalk and the street, what if that tree is a city tree? And that, that roots have caused that problem? I mean, does that now fall into the, I mean, i- it's, well, that's the city's responsibility now because it's the city's tree or what if the, what if the problem comes because the roadway hasn't been properly maintained and it's, and there's been like sinkholes or something happened on the roadway from vehicles or whatever. And then, and then, so that's one concern is you now have the homeowner being responsible for stuff that's off site of their property. Second thing I would be concerned with would be that you now have people being required to pay for something that could be, you know, because I actually remember there are citizens I knew of that had this situation and there was a, you know, it was like months and months worth of people come, plumbers coming out and you know, snaking in and they were like, well, we think it, the blockage is at a hundred and fifty feet. So they started measuring out and figuring out if that was actually out into the pub, in the street, or if it was still on the property. And there was this whole like, you know, duh, splitting hairs to see exactly how far the breakage to see who was gonna be responsible. Uh, or, you know, where the problem was. And so I worry about, you know, you have now uh, somebody hiring, you know, third-party company, although they would have to abide by guidelines, I understand that, coming out and, you know, jackhammering up a pub, our public street to make a repair. I just don't know how I feel about that. So I, I just feel like, I don't know, it just feels to me like I don't know why homeowner would be responsible for pipes that, that something happens when it's completely off their property. I don't, you know, and I don't see how a blockage would cause a, I mean, I guess a blockage could cause a break in a pipe, but it more, I, I think that a, a structural break in a pipe that could be, you know, require jackhammering the road up and all that seems to be more likely from age or a, you know, a pipe that was put in the ground, you know, from nineteen forty or, you know, whatever, or tree roots or something like that is more likely than it being the homeowner's fault more to, so to speak, because of something they put down their toilet. That's just my thoughts. I don't know. Um, do, do you have any, I mean, do you have any comment on that or you want to?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah. No, you make some, you make some good points. The thing with the tree roots issue, um, so they're currently responsible to, you know, uh, clear that blockage of tree roots or to block it, like you said, if out here and, you know, if, even if this is a city tree, right now, the way the ordinance reads, it's still the homeowner's responsibility to clear any blockages. So that would include from tree roots. Now, if the tree roots were actually damaging the pipe, um, you know, and that's probably a bit of a gray area, you know, we'd have to look at what, you know, on a case-by-case basis as far as what the video would show. Um, but it is the homeowner's responsibility to have a plumber or whatever, video the line and then we look at it and um, the way it reads right now, we would look at the video and this is what happened though, uh, in one case, uh, specifically last fall, is we looked at it and it was, okay, yes, uh, the, the line is damaged. Uh, and we went and repaired it and that was a little over seven thousand dollars to do that. Um, so that can happen and it's really gonna be a case-by-case basis as far as the video. If there, if the pipe was crushed or something from, you know, like you say, the road wasn't maintained or we had a contractor working in there, something that we can clearly, you know, and you can assign that, you know, if, if it's related to the contractors of the city's, you know, construction activities, uh, we could probably tie it back pretty quick and, and take responsibility for that, uh, which would put it on the city at city expense if us or our contractor were deemed responsible. Um, sometimes, yeah, these things do get into a gray area. Uh, and so, uh, fair enough point there. So it would be again, a case-by-case basis. We'd have to look at it. So, um, but that would be extent of my response to your comments.
So because yeah, I feel like what we're doing is kind of creating a gray area where it's like we can get in a situation where we say, you know what? Nope. It's the homeowner's responsibility. And then they hire a company to come out and that company, you know, after uprooting the road or whatever, uh, they say, oh, you know, actually that, that, that was caused by whatever. And then maybe we have city staff saying, no, I don't agree with that assessment. And then you have a conflicting, you have conflicting opinions from a private company to the city. I, I feel like the overlap of responsibility there is, is, can create some really sticky situations. Whereas if there is just a definitive, you know, if it's on your property, I don't care if the pipe is, you know, from nineteen twenty or whatever, if it's under your property, then you are responsible if the, if the, if the, if the damage is under your property, but if it's in the city right of way, then it's the city. I, I just feel like, and again, we don't even have that. It's actually already kind of shifted more towards the, the property owner could bear cost the way the, the ordinance stands right now. I just, I'm concerned because I know, I know the amount of, and I've been told when it conversations with yourself and other public works, that there's, you know, there's, there is a certain, you know, amount of underground stuff that the city that's, that is aged out. And so I feel like we're gonna be now shifting that onto the property owners and I just don't know if I feel comfortable with that. Um, what about, do you know of homeowners? So does homeowner's insurance cover work on city property? Because if it doesn't, then how many, how many people are gonna be able to afford to, to, you know, to bring a seven thousand dollar repair if they don't have, uh, if insurance doesn't cover those types of things? Do you know?
Yeah, I do not know. And I don't know if uh, the city attorney uh, may have any, any sense of that or not. Um, I don't know. It might depend on the policy, uh, you know, as to how robust it is or not. I would think it to be unlikely. Um, but um, but possible, but it's not something that I would think would be typical.
Okay. Um, we have lots of hands up here. I'm gonna, thank you, Mike. I'm gonna go to uh, I would start with city attorney real quick. Mr. Splendari, do you wanna make comment? I can't hear you. I think you're muted.
All right. I'll, I'll figure it out one of these days. Um, just to quickly address the gray area issue that's been addressed or brought, brought up, so to speak. The, the, the language as drafted actually creates no more of a gray area, technically speaking, as the prior language. What it's doing is it's shifting the presumption from the pro, the city's responsibility unless the property owner causes it from, it's switching it from that presumption to, to the, to the presumption that it's going to be the property owner's responsibility unless the city caused it. So there always exists, there always exists the potential for a factual dispute as to what caused it. And there's no way around it. You can't draft ordinance that's going to be create uh, draft away that p- potential factual dispute because um, there's just always gonna be that, you know, well, my plumber said this, well, my expert said this. There's gonna be that battle of experts or batter, battle of, of what happened, so to speak. And so all this does is shift the initial presumption from the pr- city's responsibility unless caused by the property owner to uh, property owner's responsibility unless caused by the city. But there would be that, that possibility of dispute regardless. I just wanna address that. And I would also say, even if we took out the language, whether it said it's this property owner's responsibility unless caused by the city or vice versa. If we take out the language that says unless that, unless clause, unless the damage was caused by the city or unless the damage was caused by the property owner, um, they would still, the other party would still have that as a defense. Um, so that's gonna exist by operation of law anyways, as far as, hey, if you go out and do something and it's your fault, the law, just general legal principles are gonna allow that person to say, I shouldn't have to pay for that because that was your fault. So at introducing that language also won't create the ambiguity. So I just kind of wanted to address that. Um, and then as far as the homeowner's insurance, candidly, I don't know. Um, uh, but I don't know if the homeowner's insurance policy, if it does pre, uh, if it does cover the blockage in the line, I don't know if the homeowner's policy would um, would actually stop coverage, so to speak, at the property line. But I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I know Mike asked, maybe the city attorney did, but um, I don't know the answer to that right now as I sit.
All right. Well, thank you for uh, expanding on the things that you were, um, I have uh, Mr. Heinz and then uh, Councilman Lozano. Mr. Heinz, go ahead.
Um, before we proceed, um, Mike, can you explain the nexus between what we're trying to do this, do here and the overall rates? And the overall rates for water sewer?
Yeah. So the way the language is currently written with the city, uh, essentially responsible in the right of way. At city expense, uh, and again, as I touched on, uh, where we've started the, uh, the cost of service study. Uh, if we're to keep the language as is and make no change. Then, uh, we would need to build in, uh, a portion of the rates to cover these costs. Uh, you know, based on a certain number of, of, uh, uh, these older connections. Uh, which we're starting to see fail that have been in the ground fifty, seventy years or more. Um, and so we would, uh, we would, uh, build that into the rates. I don't have a, a real good sense of that. I, I had a brief conversation with Councilman Vanderburg who asked a couple of questions this afternoon. We did some quick math. I would say, you know, you're probably looking at twenty to thirty percent of the city sewer connections. If we estimated, we might be looking at, you know, an average of say ten of these connection repairs a year. You know, and roughly say seven thousand dollars or something like that. You're, you're probably looking at it affecting folks, um, you know, at the most, I would hope. A couple of two, three dollars a month, uh, in their rate. So, uh, so you can figure probably in the twenty, twenty-five dollar. Uh, more a year, uh, added to their sewer rate. I would, I would expect something on, along those lines, but. Again, I would just say that is just a real quick off the cuff. You know, numbers, uh, and I would, uh, would want our, our consultant to. To do a, a real detailed evaluation to have a better sense of what that, that rate impact might be. And again, it would be for everybody, uh, you know, so you would have potentially all rate pairs. Uh, supplementing, you know, those with these older connections that are more likely to need replacement.
So, but Mr. Mayor, I submit to you, there's the policy question. Is the, do we want to pass the cost? Because currently the way the law is written, the ordinance is written. These repairs are being made and not being supported by revenue. And this, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. This is an enterprise fund, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's meant to operate as, as a business, which means that there's no gifts. And so whenever there's expenditures, there should be an offsetting revenue. And the way this language is written, there will be expenditures, but there'll be no offsetting revenue. And so we are merely just trying to correct this language and essentially. Do we build, does the city retain the liability to replace these sewer mains or these, uh, laterals, sorry? And build that into the rate. So all the rate payers pay for that service. Or do we give it to the individual homeowners? And let them pay for that service. Um, and so I wanted everybody just to have a more. A, a different context, a greater context for the policy question here. Mike, am I incorrect?
No, that's accurate.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes the comments thus far.
Okay, I, I have some thoughts again, but I want to go to my other council members who have their hands up. Um, uh, Councilman Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a, an interesting topic. Um. And, and you know, it always starts when you're trying to, uh, you know, justify rates or. Not even justify rates, but, but take a look at your rates, um, and, and, um. And, and, and so these things come up, right? And, um. Uh, I don't necessarily have any, uh, initial desire either way. Um, most of my questions were just answered by the city manager and. His, uh, it. Exchange with Mr. Selling. Um, it would seem to me. That, um, truly the, the, the real question is, is do we retain that or do we pass? Uh, and, 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 and potentially, well, not potentially, but the rates will be raised. Um, or do we, uh, continue or do we have the homeowner pay for it? Um, and so, you know, um, I had a couple of questions about what the lateral does and, and that was a great, um. Depiction of the house and the, and the pipe that was, that really worked and, uh, Mr. Selling, that's. All of my questions that I had for you today were right there. So I appreciate that. Um, so yeah, I, you know. I, it, it would be a big hit to have to have a seven thousand dollar bill, right? And, um. Uh, and, and, and on the other hand, um, you know, the, the, the city has to be responsible for that. Uh, then we're going to have to figure out how to, how to pay for it. And so, um. Really, it, that's, I guess that's the correct, the question. I would be interested in seeing some more data on. Um, really what that would mean to each individual property owner. Uh, both, both on the commercial and residential side, if it would be different. Uh, I don't know that it would. Um, but, uh, we would definitely have to, I would, I would prefer, and I don't know if we have to do this by law, but if we're going to do something like that and. Increase the, um, the rate and have a specific rate. For repair of lateral lines that we put that into a fund separate from other, um. Revenues if we can, uh, for the sewer, um, so that. When those things happen that we have that fund to go to, we can see how much money is in there and how much we're collecting over time. And just to ensure that we're not, um, spending. More out of it than, than we're taking in and have it, have it a mid, midpoint adjustment if we need it, um. Or, um, you know. A- and so it's, we're accountable. So it's transparent and accountable, uh, where that money's going, uh, out of a bill. And what it's, uh, intended use is and making sure that that's, that's what we intend to do. Now, I'm not saying that I'm, uh. Uh, that, that, that's my position. I certainly want to hear from others, but. Uh, but I, but those, that's really the question is, do we keep it the responsibility and, um, raise the rate of. Uh, to pay for it, or do we, uh, shift it to the homeowner? So, uh, thank you, and I look forward to the continued discussion.
So. I'm trying to think of this from citizen standpoint. So let me ask you this. So let me get this straight. So there's no maintenance, there's nothing in our rate structure now that people pay. That's, that's set aside for maintenance. Like you don't, uh. You know, none of our rates that, that, that a homeowner pays for sewer, uh, i- is earmarked for, uh, maintenance issues like this. Is that? Am I correct on that?
Hmm, well, it depends on how you define maintenance. And I think i- if I understand what you're asking. There's no, uh, portion of the current rates that, uh, those revenues are intended to do any of these. Lateral line, uh, repairs or replacements. There is, uh, hmm, funding a portion of the rates, uh, pay for. The general maintenance of the, of the main lines, if you will, and the treatment plant and, and lift stations and the major elements of the system. But not for the individual laterals.
So, yeah, and to, to, to make it a little more specific, that, that question is. Um, if twenty or thirty percent of our existing, as you stated, uh, are, you know, aging out and in need of repair and you're estimating, you know, possibly up to ten repairs. A year being needed, um. Uh, it's, uh, what I would say is then is no part of our rates that we currently pay to the city. Our city side to maintain that. And when I, when I, when I, you said, well, what do you mean by maintenance? What I mean by is to me, it's like this, let me put it a different way. Um, it's like you're charging, let's say, let's say I'm the homeowner. I mean, so I am a homeowner in Gobble. Let's just, just, just to be neutral to say, you know, John, Joe Schmo homeowner. Uh, he's being charged to use our services. But then you're also going to then charge him to maintain the infrastructure. For those services and that to me, I just don't, it seems a little like, I don't think it's fair to penalize someone who lives in a house on Palin Avenue, for example. Uh, because the street, you know, those houses were built nineteen sixties and the main. You know, the main connection down the street where these, 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 these split offs, uh, these lateral connections are. I, I don't think it's fair to penalize them because it's more likely that there could be a break out in the street, whatever. Than it is because, or someone that bought a house over, you know, off of Ringo, that's only like two years old. I think. I understand that somebody's got to pay for it. And I guess what I'm hearing is like, well, we either got to make people pay for these or we're going to add it into their rates. But I think as the taxpayer is going to say, or rate payer, should I say, they're going to say, well, I already pay rates and I pay sewer rates and they are always. Climbing and becoming higher. And now I'm being told that. Now I'm not paying for the service, but now you're going to make me be responsible for what could potentially be. You know, a sixty-year-old, uh, infrastructure that now I'm going to be on footing the bill for if it happens to be, you know. Twenty-five feet off my property in the middle of Lincoln Way or something. I just, that's my problem with this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
If I may, and I apologize for violating protocol with my hand up there. But I think what Director Selling is saying, in the calculation of the current rates. There is no element or no factor. Built into those current rates that affect or that taken into consideration sewer lateral replacement. And so if council chooses to go with the way the, the ordinance is currently written, they will then, they will now have to factor that in. To the rate, um, recalculations going forward. And we wanted to bring this to you just. Just so we can put the policy question before you. Mr. Selling, am I incorrect?
No, that's correct.
Okay. So it is merely, we're just merely, there's an element there that isn't there. These rate calculations are pretty complex. Um, we did them over in my old city. And yes, sewer lateral replacement is a component. Within these rate calculations. Um, and so there's a number of other components as well, but this component isn't there. And I don't know if this is an oversight on past staff and councils, but we're trying to correct this. And make sure that this component is properly stated. Again, because this is an enterprise fund and subject to audit.
What fund? I, and I know Councilman Vanderburg wants to speak, just this real quick question, and I'm going to go on to him. So what fund, what fund have these been, these repairs been, been, um. Has been used to repair so far? Is it that fund? And if, and if so, are we, is it causing that fund to be, you know. Uh, over budget and we're going into some kind of reserve that we have for that? Or can you elaborate?
It's, it's, it's coming from the enterprise fund that supports our wastewater enterprises. And it's not a matter of whether or not the, the expenditure is running the fund. Um, into a deficit or creating some sort of negatives, uh, negative impact on the fund. It's the policy of the fund. The fact that it's an enterprise fund. Indicates that all revenues, all expenditures have to be supported by like revenues. And there has to be an attempt. To make sure that those expenditures are recovered. Um, by proper revenues, which is why the rate studies are done every so often to ensure that the expenditures. And the revenues are in line. And what staff is merely bringing to you is there's a category of expenditure. That isn't included in the rates that we now need to include, should council desire to leave this language the way it is. Um, it's, it's more about the philosophy of the fund. As to whether or not this is creating a problem with the fund. It's, it's an enterprise fund. It's a totally different animal. Than the general fund or any of the governmental funds that we have. It's a business type fund.
Mr. Mr. Vanderburg, uh, sorry to make you wait. Go ahead. Sorry, sir.
That's quite all right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, ci- city manager Heinz, thank you for pointing that out. And it's, it's simply. If I may reiterate in a simpler fashion, it's simply a new problem has arise, has arisen. And the city is prudently looking forward in the coming years that this new problem must be funded. So that's the, the rate increase or the rate analysis is coming up. And it's now time to decide whether we need to add this to the rate analysis or not. Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So just real quick, uh, if you could go back to that picture, you know, that's, um, it should be noted that. Correct me if I'm wrong anytime along my, what I'm talking. This is, you know, just a stereotypical version. Uh, some pipelines, some main lines may be further out in the street, some may be closer, uh, some deeper, some shallower. Uh, it just all depends on the individual home. Uh, it also is, you know, as stated earlier. Only the older homes, so it may also be affecting, uh. Older or older community that is based on a bit more fixed income in general, uh. A community that is maybe not, uh, so economically advantaged. Um, I would also say that. And if, if we're talking about the scenario in the photo, we're asking the citizens to dig up city streets. And repave and repack and pay for the, the digging up of the line into city property. Clearly the city. Property, you know, being the tar and all that, and then paying for all that to be filled back in. Whether you think that's, you know, fair or not, that is up for debate, but I just wanted to point those things out. And also. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Director Selling, per our conversation. Um, and there's no, this is just a rough guesstimate, you know, that, uh, at seven thousand, eight thousand, always going up. It's going to, it could be roughly forty to fifty thousand dollars a year for the city. An additional expenditures to cover, uh, the random occurrence of these failures.
Yes, potentially that forty to fifty thousand dollar number, you know, again, if you're talking. Maybe anywhere from a handful to ten or twelve of these a year. Uh, and again, as you noted. Depending on how deep, you know, how far, uh, where, you know, the, uh, the main is in comparison to the. The home, uh, a lot of factors can affect, you know, what the cost is. I would tell you that we replaced twelve feet of pipe. Uh, on a second one, uh, this past fall and that was a little over four thousand dollars. So. You know, one was four, another one was a little over seven that we've done a couple in the last three or four months. Um, so, so there's just kind of, you know, a couple of real world examples, uh, from, uh, you know, the recent past. So. Um, again, you know, I, I would want, uh, you know, the consultant, uh, you know, I, I, I'm just kind of throwing out a few numbers just for. You know, understanding, uh, this item right now. Uh, but, you know, we would definitely expect to see. More of these occur as, as time marches on.
I think, so two thoughts, Mike. One is that scenario you just mentioned about the recent repair. What do you recall was the cause in that particular instance? What was the cause of the breakage or the?
Yes. So on one of them, uh, the one with the twelve feet, there was a little over four thousand dollars. It was an old, uh, style of pipe that was used, oh gosh, from probably the forties or fifties up through. The eighties. It's called the orange bird pipe. And it's, it's a, you know, poor material. It's essentially wood and tar kind of combination. It was kind of like the precursor to plastic is probably the best way to put it. And, uh, it tends to collapse, uh, it, it's much more prone to, you know, root intrusion. And that kind of thing. And, uh, so it was a significant section that had collapsed. Uh, and, and so that was the cause there. On the, uh, on the deeper one, again, uh, old, uh. Material, even older than that, as I recall, I think it was something from even earlier decades. Um, I don't think it was even orange bird, but I'd have to confirm with staff. So anyway, uh, that one was deeper and, and hence the additional expense. So.
So I, um. So thinking, uh. Just to be clear for the public that might be listening or. You know, conversation might happen after this, um. This enterprise fund, I mean, what, what basically you're saying is, you, because you talk about it's a, you know, it's like a business fund. And I just want to be clear that it's like, it's not going to be, it's not going to be like. I mean, there's clearly a risk, there's clearly a concern that upcoming future repairs, as you're seeing them in the city. For this type of thing are going to, uh, put a burden where they're not, you know, the expenditures are going to be not. Covered, um, by the revenues. Because if that wasn't the case. And you said, well, there's plenty of money to cover them, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, right?
No, not exactly. I think as, as a city manager kind of, uh, touched on, essentially when they do the rate analysis to determine what the rates are. And there's a certain amount of capital replacement that's programmed in for the various elements that the city is responsible for. And, and from what. We determined the current rates did not account for any lateral, um, you know, repairs or replacements. It was strictly for the mains and the lift stations and, and the, the greater treatment plant, uh, elements. So there is a capital component to the rates that does not include this. And again, this would be an incremental, you know, increase to add this. Again, I can't speak to, you know, whether it was an oversight by, uh, you know, uh, folks in the past. Uh, but it's, it's something that, like I said, it's, it's come up, uh, you know, a few times now in the past. Of, uh, several months and, and with the rate study. We wanted to put the, uh, the policy question to the council as to, you know, which way we would want to proceed.
So, actually, I'm going to let, um, Council Pappinow, uh, chime in here. Go ahead.
So y- you've all, uh, pretty much answered most of the questions I had written down.
Except for two things we've talked about, um, that I, I don't believe we have the answers to tonight, that I think would be important, uh, to decide whether we, uh, put this in the fund and it raises the rates. Um, one is, um, you know, we need to find out generally if this is something that homeowners insurance is going to cover. Um, you know, pretty much everybody's got it. And if that's the case, then um, it, it wouldn't, you know, necessarily put people in that heart of a bind when there's a failure. Um, and then secondly, appreciate, uh, Director Selling's, uh, you know, rough estimate. Um, two to three dollar a month increase, something like that, but just kind of a, a little bit more reliable. Um, estimate on that, you know, as best we can. I understand it's not an exact science. Um, so that we can make a, you know, a, a better decision as to whether we should you know, roll this into, to this fund or, uh, and pass it on, or if we should just uh, shift it back to um, the, you know, catastrophic expense of the, the property owner when the time comes. Um, so I, I think those two things probably be helpful to answer before we try and go forward with too much of a decision yet.
Well, I, I would, I would too like to see, uh, what the rates could be, but, but I, I, I could say even at this early point right now, I don't think I'd be in favor of putting this onto the homeowner just as an outright cost, because in my opinion, your older homes, you're probably your majority of your older homes are gonna be owned by possibly older people. And I know that's maybe stereotyping, but I, I think that if you were to do, uh, you know, look into that, it's probably the case. So, you know, you're talking to older people, fixed incomes. I would be completely shocked if homeowner insurance covered off property thing. And if it did, if that was the case though, and it was, but I can tell you about homeowners policies, and I know many of you know this. A lot of times you don't wanna turn stuff into that, because for one, you know, you're gonna have a deductible, which maybe even the homeowner couldn't even afford that part. And usually when you turn in a claim, you get canceled. And that's just unfortunately, just the way that insurance companies operate. Nobody wants to turn in claims nowadays because they're afraid to get canceled, and they won't be able to find insurance somewhere else. So the risk of paying a higher rate per year, uh, to me just seems, you know, the lesser of two evils, better than just everybody crossing their fingers and hoping they don't fit a seven thousand or, you know, I mean, I could see it being ten grand, the way inflation is with things. You, you know, take up a road sidewalk, you'll, you get a planner, you get a reinforced sidewalk, and then you gotta have an inspector. You know, this and that, then you gotta get a permit to do it. Pretty soon it's fifteen grand. I mean, there's just no way I'm gonna want homeowners to bear something like that. And then there's finger pointing. I, so I would leave more towards incorporate. This needs to be built into the rates. This needs to be a maintenance, you know, rolled up in those fees that are collected to take care of this type of thing. Because I don't feel like the public should be going out in the pub, in the public, you know, right away and doing stuff. So I would like to see what those rates are, but that would be my impression. I, I'm not really gonna be in favor of putting this back on the homeowner. That's just me. Uh, Vice Mayor, you wanna, um, make comment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Selling, I have a few question and just for the clarification. And the one question not for me, and the, somebody asked on the citizen, you know, their recommendation, they say read by title only and waive the first reading. Could you explain a little bit, uh, to the public what that mean?
Yeah, I'll try and, uh, if the city attorney wants to, uh, correct me or, or supplement, uh, would welcome that. Uh, so essentially, when you make an ordinance change, uh, or, or create a new ordinance, uh, my understanding is it's a two-step, uh, process. And essentially, the first step is you introduce the ordinance or the revision and waive the reading of it. And, and basically set, uh, the second date to bring the ordinance back uh, for, uh, council consideration. So the first, uh, uh, step that what we're doing tonight is basically discussing what the proposed change in this case is. Uh, and, uh, and then, uh, taking direction from council if they wish to proceed. And, you know, in, uh, changing the ordinance, then we would, uh, set the date for, uh, returning, uh, for, uh, formal consideration.
Uh, thank you for the clarification. Uh, my next, just kind of information, I see on the report on the staff did some research and check on the other cities. And, uh, did you have the idea of which city is all the responsibility on the homeowner and some city is is the city responsibility? Could you might be, tell me how many cities you did surrounding area, which cities, yes, or was?
Yes, I think we heard back from, uh, I think about four in our general area. And, uh, as I recall, there were three that said they put the responsibility on the, uh, property owner. And the one that was similar to Galt was Elk Grove, uh, under the Regional Sanitation District. Uh, they are the same as us and, and they will do the work at their expense in the, uh, city right away.
All right, there is a three cities, they said they are, uh, general responsibility to the owner. Which city was that?
Uh, Sacramento, I believe, and the other two I think were Elk Grove, or I'm sorry, um, Rancho and I think it was Citrus Heights, but I'd have to go back and confirm.
Okay, and it stopped right to Lowday and Stockton?
I did not hear from Lowday or Stockton, no.
All right, thank you. And then my next question is, uh, uh, you know, the rate increase, right? Uh, we does not have enough data, is this time maybe a one dollar, maybe two dollar, or maybe a three dollar uh, per month to increase if we are not going to put that burden on that thirty percent, uh, houses like in build back in maybe forty, right?
Correct.
Yeah, because there's sewer system, uh, uh, I believe in back in ninety fifty, they were using clay pipes and galvanized.
Of course, yeah, typically for, for sewer, it would be clay or orange bird back in that timeframe, but yes, and sometimes ductile iron, so.
And then that, that, they are deterioration approximate ages between fifty to sixty or more. Uh, that's what is, is and all the new houses now we're using PVC and ABS, right?
Correct.
And, and, and their life expectation very much around eighty to hundred a year.
Correct.
Right, so I'm talking about these, uh, if we putting these burden on the houses, that can be most likely in west side of the city, right?
Yeah, older, yes.
Yeah, and, 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 uh, and, and the study we did, we don't have enough data. I don't know how much will be increased or not. Uh, just, just like in, for example, if the house is old and their sewer will broke and hypothetically is owner's responsibility. Uh, what do you think if, if on the new recommendation, because they have to get the permit, uh, the contract had to go not in the private property, in the public property. And you know, when the contractor giving you a bed to working on the public property as compared to the personal property is a lot of difference. You have to get the permit. And when you're working on the public property, the contractor, uh, especially they, they have to take care of the traffic, they have much more. And what approximate, I know it's can be different, you know, the, the, the length of the lateral. Or what do you think approximate bill cost to that house? Is, is, is same time, what can you approximate, uh, you think?
Yeah, it's, it is hard to say. I will tell you on the example, uh, the deeper one, uh, over on, uh, McFarland, which was a little over seven thousand. We did, uh, seek a quote from a contractor rather than have our forces do it. And the quote came back a little over ten thousand. So we went ahead and did it ourselves rather than have the contractor do it. Um, so, uh, and probably, you know, saved the city in this case about three thousand dollars. Um, it's hard to say, you know, uh, on a given, it might, it might be more expensive, it might be cheaper. Uh, it, it is hard, hard to say. It's, it's kind of a case by case, but generally, yeah, with the cost of a permit, you know, um, but the thing is, is they're not paying, paying prevailing wage either, like we would have to do. So, um, so the homeowner would save that expense, you know, to some degree. So there'd be somewhat of an offset there.
Okay, uh, then my next question, uh, are we, uh, when we doing, or do you have any idea for upgrading the sewer system in the old area, like in downtown area, or we don't have any plan?
So the city has a, a master, you know, uh, master plan for the sewer system, but it does not, uh, look at, you know, the individual laterals, so.
Thank you. And my last just a comment, I would like to make comment to the public. I do understand as a council member, I will be my best interest to the city. But another hand, I have a best interest to my constituents and best interest to these people, the homeowners. And I'm reluctant to move this forward because there is thirty percent houses in old houses on the west side of Sacramento. If there's a problem, I don't know how they can afford ten thousand dollar right way to do that. And the other thing is, I will wait for the age study. I really need to know how much effect. If there is a couple dollar, I believing in myself, you know, just put with everybody so we can help to these people. They don't have to pay ten thousand dollars from the pop. That's my last. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Vanderburg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention real quickly that, uh, if there's eight thousand homes in the city of Galt at one dollar a month for twelve months, that's ninety six thousand dollars. So that's, we discussed earlier forty or fifty thousand dollars if, uh, things were to be consistent. Not that they will, but that would easily cover that and that's all that happened.
I, I agree with Councilman Vanderburg. I, I just doing some simple math. I'm thinking, you know, eight thousand homes, if you, you are, if you guys are, let's say the city projects to have to do ten of these repairs a year, uh, at a cost of, you know, seven to ten thousand, I'll just use like an eight thousand figure, just to keep the math simple. You know, uh, eight thousand dollars, you know, ten, ten repairs, eighty thousand, you know, you, you know, at two dollars a month, you know, you're looking at ninety six thousand. So I mean, yeah, I, 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 I think that's a pill that, that the citizens could swallow. I think it's peace of mind. It's almost like insurance to, to maybe have a dollar or two, you know, rate, uh, increase to cover such things. Um, I, I, I just was rather lean towards something like that than, um, than putting the brat back on these people, because I just do not think that, uh, your average homeowner in older home, uh, is gonna be able to bear an eight to ten thousand dollar cost, uh, you know, and I can see those costs going up. I just don't think it's right. I think this should be built in. I think if we're providing a service to the public uh, and we're providing an infrastructure that these things should be, um, to be honest with you, I'm surprised they haven't been, they weren't, they weren't kind of factored in already. I, I, I think this is maybe, you know, just the cans been kicked down the road or something, which wouldn't be anything new, but, um, you know, in, in government, but, um, I think we need to have this built in. Because we're not gonna, I'm not gonna put this cost on people in, in, in a huge lump sum like that. I'd rather see it on the rates. But I would like to see a rate study. And so along with what Vice Mayor said, I'm not prepared to move this along tonight either. What I would like to see is some sort of, uh, approximate rate. Uh, I would like to see a approximate projection of what cost, what that cost of and what the projected repairs would be over the coming years per year. I would like to see projected costs, and I would like to see what that equals into dollars for rate pairs, uh, at the most economical. So we're just, you know, they're paying for something, and it's not just inflated. That's what I would like to see. Mr. Heinz, you have your hand out. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I'm hearing is that it appears that council is not supportive of uh, uh, transferring the, uh, liability back to the homeowner, which then tells me that we need to include this as a component in the rate study. And if we do that, then what we can do is withdraw this ordinance. Um, Mr. Selling and his team will go forth with the consultant to develop the next rates, uh, the next group of rates for wastewater or water and sewer. And that, I believe that that study has to come before council at some point. Am I correct, Director Selling?
That's correct.
Okay, so why don't we just withdraw this ordinance? And then when it's time to look at, um, the rate study, then we will bring this back. We will bring that rate study to council. We will highlight the sewer lateral, uh, the impact of the sewer lateral expenditures in the new rates. And we can move on from there. Um, and Mayor, you are correct. This is essentially somebody has kicked this down the road, kicked this can down the road. And as you've seen in the past year and a half, um, we're not gonna let it get down the road to, too farther, uh, too far, and we're gonna try to fix it. And so this is our attempt to try to fix this issue, um, before our auditors find it.
Okay, I appreciate that. And you, and you did mention that when this, this rate study comes back, that you know, there'll be a piece of it kind of broken out where we can kind of see what's been, what part of it has been factored in for this particular, uh, infrastructure maintenance, uh, repairs.
And is that, that's correct? Is that correct, Mr. Selling?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay, great, great.
Councilman Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So my understanding of this, this might be for the city attorney, but my understanding is, is this is the first discussion. Um, the plan was to bring this back in a few weeks uh, to continue the discussion and, and make a decision on, on whether we were going to move forward on the, on the, uh, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance or not. Is that correct?
That's correct, that was a
Yeah, so by
So, so
Yeah, by California law, this require
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would say by California law, this requires, unless it's an urgency ordinance, it's gonna require to, uh, a first reading and a second reading be- before the council. Um, so I've seen that before. I've seen councils elect to, to move it forward just to continue the conversation, uh, even though they may not have had a serious intention to adopt the ordinance, um, to this, this would have to go to council twice, um, as presented.
Here's, here's my thought, and I, and I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of leaning toward where, um, you know, my colleagues have been mentioning, uh, uh, potentially looking at, uh, uh, um, a small, uh, increase to the monthly rate or the, uh, bi-monthly, I guess, is what we pay. Um, but if that were to come back at a, at a, at a place where we would, we could say that most people on fixed incomes couldn't couldn't necessarily afford that. I'd like to have the option to at least take a look at the policy related to who's responsible. Uh, I, I just don't wanna, uh, put, paint ourselves into, into a corner where, um, we're, we're tying our hands moving forward. Let, let's face it. I mean, we've had this, we had a workshop a few months, months ago on, uh, sewer rates and what we're gonna do with that, and you know, um, that, that oftentimes, uh, with inflation and with over time, uh, you know, equates to an increase. And so we're gonna hit the customer, every customer again with another increase that's so that, that potentially could be higher than what they could afford bi-monthly. And so I would just like to at least just keep this option open and have it come back and then make that decision then, but uh, with the understanding that we have a little bit more solid, uh, numbers, um, uh, of what it would cost, um, per, per rate payer, uh, moving forward. Does, does that make sense? I, I, I don't know if I
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense, uh, um, but council member, if I, if I may. Um, so, Mike, um, help the new city manager out. Galt's, um, water and sewer rate adoptions process looks like what?
So if I recall the schedule, uh, from when Mr. Clarkson and, and, uh, uh, Mr. Habib uh, presented, uh, they would be looking at, uh, June, we'd be, uh, uh, looking at adopting a rate. So I think their plan is to come back and I wanna say it was the March, April timeframe, um, with the draft, uh, rate analysis uh, as a presentation to council. And then based on, you know, whatever further direction or refinement at that point, the final rates would, uh, would come back, uh, in June for consideration.
Can we ask the consultant to, uh, create a draft rate study with and without um, sewer lateral as an, as an element?
Yes, I believe we can, yeah.
Okay, so that will allow council to see the impact of shifting, uh, the fund impact of shifting the liability to the homeowner versus it being retained by the fund. And then we can bring this policy discussion back, Mr. Mayor and members of the council at that point in time, because you'll have the numbers, and I'm, this is what I'm Because you'll have the numbers, and I'm, this is what I'm hearing from you all. Uh, you'll have the numbers and you'll see the concrete evidence that, okay, this is a dollar fifty, it's two dollars versus surprising someone with. You know, uh, but eight, eight to nine thousand dollar bill if something goes wrong. Um, we do know that some of the surrounding jurisdictions, um, we know what their sort of behaviors are in this area. And so, but hearing, from what I'm hearing from the council, the sentiment is, is that we don't want to. Um, create any harm, and not so much harm, but we don't want to create any financial surprises. Um, on our citizens, so it's, it looks to me like it's a discussion about the rates. Both including this as a component and not including it as a component, and being able to show council that, uh, that comparison. So, Ms. Mister Selling, we can, we can do that in June, you say?
Uh, I, well, I believe it would probably come before council before that, I think, you know, with the draft study. In the next probably two to three months, so.
Okay, so Mister Mayor and council members, I would, I would submit to you that we table this issue for now. And that we bring it back when we actually have a draft rate study in hand.
All right, sorry, I'm muted, that's what I was gonna ask, if 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 the, do we need to? Just to table it, because I I'm not gonna put in favor of reading in, uh, you know, first read reading or wait the first reading, so. Should we, uh, is, do we need a motion, uh, and a vote to la- to table or just direction?
I think the city attorney can help us out there.
You're gonna need a vote to table it, uh, Mister Mayor.
All right, um, well, first of all, we need to ask for public comment, so Tina, do we have any public comment on this item?
No hands raised.
All right, um, and I apologize, I should have, uh, opened it before, but I need to open public comment on this item. Uh, if you would like to raise your hand on Zoom and speak, or you can press star nine if you're on the phone. And, uh, and you can comment on this item, I will leave public comment over, open for just a. A few more moments here. Um, at which time, uh, when I conclude the public comment, I will be looking for, just to save some time here. I'll be looking for, uh, a motion to table this item to, uh, come back, um, in the. Near future with a, uh, rate study, uh, as Mister. Uh, Mister Heinz described. Oh, hang on, I gotta, I gotta close the public comment first, so, any public comment, Tina?
No hands raised.
All right, I'm closing public comment on this item, I'll now entertain a motion to table. Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Councilman Vandenberg, have a vote, please.
Um, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papno.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Uh, motion is approved, five zero. All right, uh, thank you, Mister Selling, Mister Heinz. Uh, moving on to item M, communication, do we have any this evening?
And this evening.
Uh, moving on to item N, city clerk's report.
Nothing.
All right. Item O, comments by staff, Mister Heinz.
I have no particular, uh, comments, uh, tonight, Mister Mayor, I will, um. Start with our community development director, Craig Hoffman, see if he has anything for the good of the order.
So, uh, members of the council, our, uh, housing element consultant. Provided some draft language to HCD, we're waiting to hear back. Um, how they, uh, favor that language, and if it looks good to them. I'll be looking to bring the housing element back to you as soon as I can. But we want to make sure the HCD signs off before we move forward, and that's it. So, thank you all very much, and thank you for creating that, uh, planning technician one and two position, it's a big deal.
Very good, thank you, sir, uh, let's go with Police Chief Brian Kalonowski.
Um, good evening, I actually have nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, chief, uh, let's go with Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez.
Good evening again, I'm just wanted to let the group know that. The International Council of Shopping Centers, um, has a annual show in Monterey for retail recruitment. And it's been canceled the last two years, but this year, um, it's back on again, so I'll be in Monterey. In the month of March for retail recruitment, so be able to reach out again and start talking to some retailers on, um. Hopefully some of the vacant spaces we have in Galt, and then the Simmerhorn site is one of the big focuses, so. Stay tuned, I'll give a report back once I return with, uh, some of the retailers I was able to meet with and. Give some feedback on, um, what I'm hearing that's happening in the market, and that's all I have for this evening.
Very good, think, think In-N-Out Burger and Chick-fil-A.
I know, I got it on my list, don't worry.
All right. All right, thank you so much, uh, let, let's go with our Parks and Recreation Director, Armando Solis.
Good evening again, uh, just want to remind everybody that we're accepting applications or registrations for T-ball and adult softball. And that, uh, this Saturday, we'll be holding our Winterberg Festival, uh, it will be virtual. So hopefully you guys can click on and attend, and, uh, that's it, have a great day.
All righty, thank you, thank you, uh, let's go back to Public Works Director, Mike Selling.
Yeah, thank you, Lorenzo, uh, just a quick, uh, heads up. That, uh, there's gonna be some construction starting next week down in the Fourth Street, uh, area. Uh, essentially between B and C, but a little bit between C and D, uh, right at, uh, Fourth and C. Uh, we're, um, addressing some, uh, concrete sidewalk issues there, we'll be making some. Uh, safety and anesthetic enhancements to that area, so, uh, maybe some inconveniences to, uh, to some of the businesses. Pardon our dust kind of thing for the next few weeks, I think the construction should be done by the end of February. Uh, I know we've, uh, done some outreach to the businesses and and they're, uh, been very gracious in in working with us in the city and. And dealing with the inconveniences to come over the next few weeks, uh, but I think we'll probably put some information out on social media too, just to kind of. Help get the word out, uh, that, uh, customers can can know and and, uh. Just, uh, understand that there'll be a little bit of inconvenience getting in and out of some of those businesses, but everybody's open. Uh, as usual kind of thing, so, um, looking forward to getting that done, and I think it'll be a nice, uh, improvement to the, uh, to the community there.
All righty, thank you, Director Selling, um, our city clerk, Tina Hubert.
Nothing this evening.
All righty, and last but certainly not least, our city attorney, Frank, Frank Splendario.
Yeah, good evening again, nothing further from me, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Mister Mayor, I believe that concludes staff comments.
All right, thank you, sir, moving on to item P, comments by city staff members or future agenda items, we'll start with Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you all the staff, leaving us the reports and hard working out there. And I also like to thank you for public comments. I like to thank you, Harry Wenzel especially, he gives some information regarding COVID. And he asking about the financial report, and I believe our city manager, uh, gave him a very, uh, good answer. We're gonna get that report very soon, and I also like to thank you to Sam McCord, uh, she bringing that regarding vaping. And that's all tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's what happened now. Once again, thanks to staff for all your, uh, hard work and, uh. Advice, um, and hats off to the police department and and to the city manager. For, uh, reaching out to, uh, Elk Grove City and Elk Grove Police Department, uh. In the wake of Officer Lenihan's death, um. I attended the funeral today along with, uh, very large contingent from the police department here. And, uh, was proud to see, uh, that, uh, for a brand agency this size. You know, I understand that, you know, Officer Lenihan worked here for a while, but for an agency this size, uh, to have that big of a group, uh. Showing respect was, was great, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor, uh. I echo the sentiments of my councilman Pompano, um, thank you to everybody for the staff reports and my fellow council members for having, uh. Respectful debate, even if we disagree, uh, it's good to hear the differing opinions, uh, to help form good decisions. Thank you, everybody, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I just, um, but wanted to mention real quick, um. Uh, I forgot to mention my report around about Saicog, but there was, um, and this is more for, uh. Mister Hoffman, but, uh, one of the actions the board took the other night, other day was to repurpose some, or re-. Reap funds that helped with the housing element, um, because of the issues, there were. I think they said nine jurisdictions within Saicog, uh, that were having issues with, uh, HCD. And getting their housing element through, so, um, so there was outreach done by Saicog staff to all the jurisdictions to. Encourage them to apply for additional funds and, yeah, the Saicog board re- readjusted those funds. Uh, out of other funds to help cover that, so, uh, appreciate all the work that Mister Hoffman and his staff have and have done on this. And hopefully we'll get this passed through, uh, HCD and, and, uh, we'll be all good. I I too attended the funeral for Ty Lenihan today, uh, it was very moving, um, I think. What Councilmember Papino said about our contingent, uh, wasn't just officers, we had volunteers from police department. Um, city staff, um, just very, very, uh, good, you know, it was good to see. Um, I did have a couple of comments from folks from Elk Grove who I've worked with over the years, and, uh, they appreciated, uh, our being there. So, the other thing I just want to mention is, um, the Stockton Fire Captain, uh, that was murdered, uh, yesterday. While performing his function, uh, his duties there in in the city of Stockton. Uh, very sad, um, the one thing I did want to say about it was, uh, we did have some of our Galt firefighters go down and help cover. Their stationed houses, uh, yesterday, yesterday evening, um, the ones that were off duty, and so they went down and. Been assisted with them while they, uh, began the grieving process of their fire captain. And then lastly, just the public comment, uh, Mister Wenzel on this record, appreciate you. You know, chiming in and and being the voice of the community, uh. Uh, we don't get a ton of public comment, but but when we do, it's it's important, and, uh, I appreciate that, so. Thank you very much, that's all I have, and, uh, we will see y'all in two weeks.
All right, thank you, Councilor Lozano. Uh, yeah, just, uh, echoing again, uh, to thank the staff for the reports were good, I thank you, Jackie and Armando for kind of. Doing the extra work on that. You know, that community outreach on the mark, on that, uh, market thing, um, thank you, Mister Sully, for your report, Miss Vanestine. Um, and I want to, you know, again, I want to thank staff, uh, you know, some of you I actually communicate with quite frequently, you know, text a question. Uh, hey, what about this, what about that, you know, just, um, you know, inquiring and a lot, you guys are all really quick to. To get back to me, and I appreciate that, um, you phone calls, texts, whatever, however it is that that, um. That the communication happens, but I I appreciate it, uh, you you guys know who you are, and you know, um, I appreciate you being so so very prompt. Mentioning, uh, I wanted to say, because Rich brought it up about the, the, um. The firemen, um, in Stockton, um, so my, my daughter, uh, my daughter, eh, who, uh, her. Her boyfriend, which they live together, uh, he's a, he's a paramedic, uh, has been for a while, and, uh, he actually was on a call earlier in the day. Where that fireman was, um, there, and they were there together on a call, and then when he went to. Later that evening, when he discovered what had happened, it hit him pretty hard, so that was kind of a, something that hit kind of close to home when our family, uh, you know, he was pretty upset about it, so. You don't think about, you know, first responders like firemen being in danger in that way, you think about, you know, maybe killed in a fire or something, you don't think about him being in. You know, killed by gunfire, like a police officer, so it's just crazy and shocking, so, um. You know, our thoughts are with his family, and of course, Mr. Officer Lenihan's family, I was not able to attend today, actually, um. I did not know the service was today until, uh, it was too late to make plans, so I'm glad that some of us attended, thank you for my fellow council members who did go. Uh, on our behalf, thank you, and and Mister Heinz as well. I met Ty briefly one time, and so, um, it's a sad thing, uh, for our department to have so many of our officers, um, you know, have worked with him and. I know it hit our, hit our, hit our, hit our department hard, so. Um, I would like to leave, uh, one last thing about the public comment, Mister Wenzel, Mister McCord. Thank you for the public comment, we always welcome it, and regarding that public comment, I want to leave one last thought. That I got from League of Cities, that kind of stuck with me, I didn't mention earlier. Um, one of our commentators said, as elected officials. Uh, doing what's most of the time a selfless job, the best we can hope for are the, the only congratulations we can, or the, or thank, thank. The only thankfulness we can expect from the public is empty seats. And I know that sounds funny, but it's very true, empty seats and no public comment is typically means that we're doing. You know, we're, we're hopefully doing a good job and people aren't really mad about stuff, so I guess we should be happy that we don't get a lot of comment, although I'd like to hear more. But I guess that's just the nature of what we do, so I just want to leave you guys with that, thank you, everybody, have a good evening, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty four PM. Good night, everyone.